Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the workshop. We will go ahead and get started. I don't have the public comments sheets. There's no public comments. All right? So we will skip public comment and Board will go right to the workshop item number one, which is Board Discussion with FSBA Regarding the Superintendent Search. So I'll give it away. Do you find, fellas?
Thank you, sir.
Of course, absolutely.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Today, Board, what we'd like to do is discuss kind of four general topics with you. The first being kind of an applicant screening guide, should you choose to use that. Then I want to talk a little bit about the semifinalist selection process and how we'll work through that. And then get your input on what some of your preferences might be with regard to the two days of onsite interviews, kind of what that would look like. And then Dr. Vogel will wrap up with some comments on kind of getting first steps and first information about potential contract negotiation items that you'll have with the new superintendent. If you would please look with me at your screening guide. I believe that Ms. Cox did put a copy in front of you. It's a four-page document. And what you will notice on there is that we've kind of put in your minimum and preferred qualifications on this screening guide. If you choose, I know you're receiving some applications already and we'll, you know, we have another, what, two or so weeks with the advertisement period. If you wanted to use this document to kind of go through and screen some of the applicants and you can make your personal notes on it. If you do use it, though, just remember that it would be a public record. So if you do use this document to kind of put your thoughts about candidates together, just maintain those and turn them into Ms. Cox at the end so we can maintain that as a public record. So as you know, our advertisements will close on the 10th and we're scheduled to be back here on April the 12th to have you select your semifinalists. So this document, it might be a good document to use when you come back on the 12th just to refresh your memory about some of your candidates. So that's again, this is for your use if you choose to use that.
Quick record, real quick.
Yes.
Is there any questions from the Board on this particular part of it?
I don't have, I don't have the handouts.
Oh, any involved, any at all?
Any, any related to this?
You can have, are you going to get them?
Well, thank you.
I was going to say, because I'll use my computer, but that's fine.
Okay, thank you.
I just, and the Board, I think if, they're obviously going to have a couple of things they're going to present. I'd like to make sure we keep questions on whatever they're talking about.
Okay.
And once you're done presenting.
Yes.
And at the end, if we've got questions or anything else with the process overall that wasn't presented, if we have like any other questions to get into, we can. But we'll stop, like wherever, wherever, you know, when you're going, we'll stop and then see if there's any que, is there any questions on this particular part? I don't have any.
So is this to be used during the interview process or was this to, you get up here? Was this to be used during the interview process or was it?
This is just for you to use as your applicants come in. As you review their resume packets, your application packets, you may want to make some notes about a candidate and just keep the screening guide maybe for each candidate if you choose to use it.
We don't have to.
You don't have to, no.
But if you do, it's a public record.
Yes, yes, sir. That is correct. That's correct.
It's my decision.
Okay.
Okay.
Right, okay.
I'm sorry. It's public record, but these are our notes.
That's what I was going to ask the legal guys about, too. What do you?
Your personal notes, for example.
That's what I thought, too. But why do you think, has some court in the past said that this?
Because it's coming from a doc, headed like, headed from the school district? I don't know.
We've always kind of felt like it's part of what the Board is using to kind of screen and go through applicants. And should an applicant maybe ask the question, you know, what basis did you, as a Board member, kind of make your decision? We felt it was probably erring on the safe side.
But, I'm sorry, but if it's public record, we should be able, we should be able to share that then with the other Board members that could get a public records request.
Mm-hmm.
Not a good.
Once you share them, they're public record.
But we wouldn't share until after the process was done.
Well, again, I think it is kind of your personal notes so that when we come back and ask y'all to kind of discuss each applicant and as we go through the semifinalist selection process, we'll open up the floor to discuss applicant one. So any comments that a Board member might have about applicant one. For an example, you may say, I really see a strong curriculum background with this applicant. If that's your personal notes that you've kind of made on that person, then that would, that would be what you would use to kind of refresh your memory about certain, a certain applicant.
But the legal opinion is, just to be clear, is that this would be a personal note and in your legal opinion it would not be covered by the sunshine laws?
If you keep them just with your, yourself and you don't share them. They're just your notes for your, your own benefit.
Okay.
But if they get shared, they become a.
So even if I, like, if I would make a note here and then I would talk about it in front of the Board, then I would have to turn this in as a public record?
Yeah, once you share it. Okay. But if you keep it to yourself, it's just your own, you're just recording it for your own purposes.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I just want to expand on that. If I write anything on this form at all, it now becomes a public record opposed to writing a note on a regular notepad. I just want to be clear on it because, you know, I've written notes on my own on a legal pad.
I don't, I don't think it's the, correct me if I'm wrong, go ahead, but I don't think it's the actual paper where you write it. From what Mr. Di just said is if we, if we express what we've written in those things, then it, then it's public record.
Yeah, it's how you're going to use it.
You're eventually going to, I'm assuming, we're eventually going to give our opinions about the candidate.
Right.
So whatever we write down are going to be our opinions anyway, so.
Don't you write down stuff before the meet, before any meeting and then refer to it when you're?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I mean, I would imagine that this is all to come back to say, if a candidate comes back to say, wait a minute, why wasn't I selected?
But then we're discussing it and they can watch the video.
Yeah, there you go.
I'm not saying.
I think it's a great tool. I plan on using it and I dare somebody to come after me, Board.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we can move on to the next one.
We have the test case.
Okay.
Yeah.
If we have to bail out a jail, then we know.
Come visit me.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
And Board members. Moving to item number two, kind of the semifinalist selection process. After the, of course, the ads close on the April 10th and we're back here April the 12th for you to select the semifinalists. What our process has been is that we would have each applicant identified, like applicant one, Mr., you know, Jim Brown, any comments that Board members would like to make about Mr. Brown. You know, make comments, you don't have to make comments, but if you have any comments you want to make, we kind of discuss each applicant. We kind of go through that applicant pool, whether it be, you know, 15, 20, whatever it is. And then if there's, after that discussion, is there any follow-up discussion by the Board members about a certain candidate? If not, then we'll have prepared an Excel spreadsheet. And if you can kind of picture on the left side, we'll have our Board members listed, one, two, three, four, five. And then across the top, we'll have the applicant's number, like applicants one through 21, let's say we get 21 applications. Then we'll ask, you know, Board Member Tatum, would you please give us those applicant numbers that you feel should continue, receive continued consideration by the Board? This is kind of step one. So Mr. Tatum would give his input, you know, applicant number two, three, nine, 12, 15, and 16, and 17. And we tally that. We then move to the next Board member, your candidates that you feel should continue to get consideration by the Board. Put that information in. And after we go through all the Board members, then it'll give us an automatic tally at the bottom. And we may have applicant number nine, 10, and 11 with all five Board members saying, yes, we should keep this person in consideration. That would be your first three semifinalists. If you have a candidate that has three or four, that would kind of say to us, that's the majority of the Board would like to still consider them. Those would probably be the additional group of semifinalists. At that point, let's say we might have seven or eight persons. If there were two Board members who had a preference to keep another candidate in the process, we would kind of open that up then for discussion. Maybe a Board member would like to really emphasize in the candidate because of this experience, those achievements or whatever. We then may add another candidate. But it's really majority, three or more would initially be your first group of semifinalists. And then we would discuss anyone with maybe two votes by the Board to maybe add to that group. So that's how we'll kind of work through the process. We don't do any points ranking. It's simply kind of those folks. And two, it's semifinalist group, so if we have six and there's maybe one person with some discussion as a semifinalist, would you add them in? Potentially so. Because it is just a kind of a semifinalist stage. But we'll, we'll talk about those with, with two or less.
Any questions on that process?
Okay. And I will add on real quickly that at the end of that meeting, Ms. Messina, as you know, will be sending each of her semifinalists.
Ms. Cox.
Okay. Andrew Messina?
Oh, Messina, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, yes.
My fault.
Andrew Messina. She'll be communicating with you about your one burning question that you would like to have for each of the semifinalists to respond to. So we're going to come up with five questions as Ms. Messina will work with you individually to identify that one question, to kind of make sure they're appropriate questions and also that we don't, we have questions that aren't aligned pretty much in the same arena to try to come up with five different questions. Then those will be the five questions that your semifinalists will have to respond to. Two or three via video. I want you to decide if it's three or two. And then the other two are the remaining questions by written format. And after that meeting on the 12th, she will then, that evening, send those semifinalists, those five questions with directions on how to respond to the, or the process to prepare their responses, video and written. And then the process to get that back to her by the, by the deadline, which is about four, I think, what, five days later, I believe is the deadline?
Yeah.
Let's see here. Yes, April 24th would be the deadline after you identify those semifinalists, they, to get, to get back to Ms. Messina and they'll get them back, and she'll get them back to you. We'll also post those responses on your search website as well. Okay? Thank you. Moving to the onsite interview schedules, and you should have three schedules. What we've prepared for you are three samples. One, in case you were to come up and have three finalists onsite interviews. A sample with four finalists onsite or a sample with five. The concept for each of these schedules are about the, they are the same, the concept is. And what I would like to do is move, if we would, maybe turn to the sample that says four finalists on two days. I'd like to kind of run through and hit the high points of this and then come back and get your input on some of the questions that we need from y'all to move forward. So of course, the first day, May 10th, they would arrive onsite and any out-of-area candidates would stay at a certain hotel that we'll work with Ms. Cox on to identify. That May the 11th, that day is kind of your first full day of interviews where each finalist will interview with the Board for an hour and a half. And typically, what a district would have would be a light continental breakfast that morning for the finalists to come. The Board kind of gathers before you move into the interviews. If you'll notice on this schedule, the sample with four on two days, your first interview with candidate A would be 8:30 to 10 for that hour and a half. And you'll notice that B, C, and D, we like to have some activities for B, C, and D while one candidate is interviewing. Districts have looked at kind of a school community tour with a tour host that could be a member of your senior cabinet or someone identified currently that's in administration here at the district. And/or they may team up with a business person to also be the tour host. Some districts have had just staff only, kind of do the school community tours. Some districts have had a staff person and one business, community member together with candidate B or C or D, you know, a tour host for, a tour group for each finalist. So as one finalist is interviewing with the Board, the other three are on their school community tours. The other things that some districts have done, they'll have maybe a little mini tour. They'll also maybe set aside an hour for each candidate to maybe meet with a district-level type group of administrators, the senior cabinet and/or directors and executive directors just to kind of get a state-of-the-union address report from those departments. So kind of combination of school community tours, do you, would you like anything with the staff involvement? That, that's an option as well. The other item on that first, first day of full-day interviews would be, would the Board want to entertain having a meet and greet for the community to come meet the finalists? If so, kind of what location would that be? What area would be the best to facilitate that? And right prior to that community meet and greet, if you choose to do that, what options would be available for the finalists to maybe have dinner? They'll be kind of coming back from their tours and/or their one-on-one, their interview with the Board. And is there a place, maybe the, that second floor cafeteria, they could all kind of meet back here? You have a, maybe a, kind of a catered dinner for the finalists up there and their spouses, if they have a spouse, before they go to that community meet and greet? So that, that would be something that's kind of nice to have them finish up their day, have about an hour break to have a light dinner, and then move to the, the meet and greet with the community. The final day is, of course, on that final day, you'll have your hour interview one-on-one with each finalist. We'll identify, depending on the availability of rooms here, either five rooms or conference rooms for each Board member to be in. And the finalists would move around to interview with the Board members throughout that day. Again, we kind of start off that day with a light continental for the Board and the finalists to be there. And then go through your one-on-ones and have a quick, you know, lunch around noon, something kind of light, again, maybe up in your cafeteria area. If, because we'll have those one-on-one interviews here at this building. And kind of wrap up the day with the one-on-ones. So to kind of move to some direction we would like to get from the Board today would be your thoughts on the tours and what kind of tour host you might think about.
Um, Ms. Messenger, do you want to start?
What he did to me there, what he just did.
I was going to, I said, you know what? Let's let the ladies go first.
Oh, that's, that's so gentlemanly.
Southern gentlemanly.
Actually, I had something else that I noticed. I noticed, I went back and looked at our timeline that you guys had given us and it did say that on the 11th and the 12th would be the onsite interviews and that's what this is. But we, I think, had some issues with a Board member not being able to make the 12th because we had a workshop and we had to move it to the 11th. So I don't know, are those dates firm, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Those dates are hard, are.
Because we had a, we, we actually had a workshop scheduled for the 12th and we ended up moving it to the 11th so that we could all be there, which I'm sure that, I don't want to, I'm sure we could move that again.
That's just a hard date.
But I don't know, like, how firm those two days are, I guess, because that, my, I just want to make sure everyone, everyone can be here and participate. And so there's that. But about some of the questions you asked on here, about a community meet and greet, I support that. Are you looking for us to give, like, location?
Well, we would certainly like to have your input on what would be an appropriate location, you know? Location-wise, as central as could be.
Yeah.
You know, sometimes a, if, I don't know if you have a space here that would kind of facilitate that number of people coming in, your community? Is there a civic center, a college, or some, some facility that can kind of host?
Yeah, I was going to suggest, or like, maybe Wakeland's not big enough because there's a big room there, but I don't know, like, the parking is only so much there.
I was going to suggest MTC.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Where we hold, like, the awards.
I don't really feel like that's necessarily centrally located there.
It's not.
I mean, I don't feel like that's very convenient to the people that live out west, but it's a big facility.
They can have dinner and then go upstairs for the meet and greet. We can just reserve.
Upstairs big enough, yeah? I mean, upstairs?
Where?
Pier 22.
I go, I go upscale, sorry.
Like, is upstairs big enough?
It is.
It's probably big enough.
Um, so if you're asking, I support that. I think that that would be an important thing to do a community meet and greet. Where that would be and that's a, I mean, Mrs. Foreman's idea is an interesting one, dinner and then up in that ballroom area up there. I don't know how much that costs. Because I feel like there are locations that probably, like, MTC, I don't know how much, I mean, I'm sure there's some sort of fee we'd pay, but I don't know.
You also have the Central Cafe, that space, they lease out that.
Up top? That's not bad.
Where, I'm sorry?
Central Cafe, which is.
Oh, okay.
It's a decent space.
Yeah.
There. And it's, and it's like L-shaped where you could break up the people. I mean, same thing with Pier 22, like, you could break up where they're, where they're located, like, where they're.
I always think about, like, how's parking there? Like.
Central?
That's true.
Central's tougher than, but Pier 22 is tough, too.
Yeah, I'm all about, like, parking. I don't want to deal with, I don't like dealing with parking issues.
We'll, we'll keep that a TBD then.
Um, I just like, I don't want to make it so that people don't feel like they can come because they're circling a parking lot 30 times and they just go, oh, never mind.
Agreed.
Which I feel like could happen if you pick somewhere that doesn't have enough parking.
And I'm, I'm sure we could get, my assumption is that we probably have community members, facilities that we could get donated help with, et cetera. I think of like an IMG, I think of, you know, well, but that, those are just.
Performance Center, too.
Correct. The Performance Center upstairs would be perfect. And Kiwanis would help, yes. So that would be, that's a great idea.
MTC's not necessarily a bad idea, it's just not, I don't consider that central.
I agree.
But it's a nice facility and it may not be a bad thing since it's, you know, these are people that we're going to hire, hopefully, one of them.
We'll see that, yeah.
So being there might be better, you know? It shows the community, that building also, so. I'm sorry, what were the other things that you were looking for guidance on?
Your concept with the tours, who would you like to have to host each finalist?
Are you asking, like, each Board member would go with a finalist or?
No, ma'am. Let's say you have a finalist A and would you like to have a staff person assigned to finalist A to kind of do the school community tours? And do you want that staff person to be combined with potentially a business person?
I like that idea. I think that that would be beneficial because I would probably give different perspectives to that applicant.
Right. The applicant gets a feel for the district through the staff person and also the community through the business person. So sometimes a challenge with that is, you know, if you only have four finalists, what four business persons would you identify and not leave someone else?
Uh-huh. I see what you're saying there. Okay. Well, I think it's a nice idea, though. I think it'd be beneficial if you're, I can see that that could cause some concerns. I mean, we could just, I do think it'd be beneficial that they are with somebody from the school district to take them around, if nothing else. And perhaps a business person, I can see the benefit of that if we could find the right number of people to make that happen.
And two, if, if you decided, you know, not to use a business person, you could have two staff persons, you know, one kind of concentrating on driving and the other staff person could be, you know, answering questions that the candidate might have.
Okay. Yeah, that's also probably, maybe that's the better, I, maybe, I don't know, you're selling me on that way better. I think that might be better because it's a, the tour is really of the schools and facilities and maybe it should be two employees that know that in order to do that. Maybe that would be more appropriate. So in my opinion, then, would be, that's the better way to go. What else were you looking for guidance on? I just want to make sure I answer everything.
Um, I mean, y'all, y'all would go with the concept with each morning, just kind of a light continental breakfast here, maybe up in the cafeteria, just to kind of kick the day off.
I mean, I like bacon, but.
Okay, okay.
Can't do that, I get it.
Right. We'll, we'll talk to Ms. Cox about that. So we, we do want to have a community meet and greet, location to be determined.
That's my opinion. I'm just making sure I answer everything and then.
Yeah, then we'll go around.
Sure the chair's going to go around.
Okay, that's good.
I just want to make sure I answer everything before I pass it on.
That's all I need.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Ray?
Okay. To her point, the 11th and 12th, I think would be hard. I know it is for me and we moved one of our workshops because I have a commitment out of town. So that's why that wouldn't work. It, and we have, well, they're going to be here on the 10th. So we need to kind of look at that. The 11th and 12th is not a good date, in my opinion. I think MTC would be a great place, however, centrally, the players where they are located is also a good spot. I mean, this is something we're going to have to cater in anyway. The parking, manatee players can support that and, but I like MTC because I favor that area. And when you say centrally located anymore, that is centrally located if you look at all, I know. I know, I see that. As far as community tours, I think it's a great idea to have somebody that isn't, you know, we have a lot of community partners with the district. I mean, it's pretty apparent when we went to the luncheon on Wednesday. So I'm sure we could rally up enough people that we have partners with to team up with our staff to do a community tour because. Because especially for those that are coming from, out of the area, that does not know our area, I think that would be good. As far as, the timelines, that's a, I mean, from, they're going to get, like, a thirty-minute break in between, do you think? Each person here, because it's like eight-thirty to ten with person A, and then ten-thirty to noon with person B. So is there, there's, am I looking at that right? There's a break in between everyone. The board's going to get thirty minutes in between, okay, all right. I kind of like that idea, too.
The candidate, depending on who the candidate is, they could have five hours. Like, that candidate B has from one-fifteen to four-forty-five on the tours.
Right, so that's going to be, okay, we'll have to time that out and make sure we, the people who will be doing this community tour and the school tours would have to be very mindful of that. How would you manage that?
I'll kind of work with Ms. Cox to kind of kick off, you know, what are a couple of sites that y'all would want to kind of have them see? Some input from the staff. And then what I would do once they say, you know, if we're going to visit the, and I'll just make this at the tech center and this high school, that would be.
To do a route?
Yes, just a route.
A predetermined route?
Predetermined route, which I'll kind of work to establish, you know, each host, let's say candidate A is going to be assigned the host, Mr. Miss, Mr. Brown and Mr. Smith. And I would do a schedule for Mr. Brown and Mr. Smith. At eight o'clock, be here at this facility to pick up your finalist. From eight-fifteen until this time, you go visit the tech center. From this time to this time, then you'll drive to this site. So, we, we develop a schedule for each of the hosts.
And the map.
And the map, and basically where to go, and that's why having a staff person's involved really is helpful because, you know, they know so much of this already. And then, if, let's say, they must be back here, if it's, say, candidate C, they must be back here at one o'clock for their interview with the board, so get here about twelve-thirty, to make sure they have time to get here. But we'll work on those schedules and outline.
Yeah, and the route is probably just as important as the schedule. Because you're going to have three people, four people, whomever, out there. So you're going to have to be rotating that as well, maybe different routes for each one.
They'll kind of start off at different places.
Right.
We'd like for them to see some of the similar sites, if we could. So that there's any, you know, comment by the board members during your one-on-ones, or the finalists may have a comment about, you know, what is kind of the capital plan for, you know, updating some facilities. We saw this place and this place yesterday. And so, I'll kind of work with, under the direction of Ms. up, with Cindy to, to kind of say, what are some key points that we can get to within the allotted time we have for that schedule?
Okay, okay. And then, hotel, you mentioned hotel. Are you, is your intent to put them all in the same?
We usually like to have them in the same location for out-of areas. Because, you know, Ms. Messina and Dorrie might, may need a room as well. We like to be there and greet them when they come into town. Make sure they kind of get out the next morning, say, the first morning of interviews. And the second morning, we'll make sure they're out on time. So, we want to kind of be over there to help them facilitate their schedule as well.
Yeah, that's a good idea, okay. I like the little cheat sheets here on the timelines. I thought it was well thought out. I don't see anything that I would change on here. I just know that it's going to be a very long day. Except when I saw the eleventh and twelfth, that was, oh, no, that's probably not going to work, so. But that's what I had.
I want to address the eleventh and the twelfth because we worked on this timeline before. It's published on the website. Anyone looking at applying, they're looking at our timeline and it specifically says, May eleventh and twelfth, conduct onsite interviews. So I don't know that we've got much flexibility because we're making a decision on the sixteenth. Now, you are available on the eleventh.
For the workshop in the morning, yes.
Yeah, we keep it eleven, I mean, either way, the eleventh or twelfth, even if we kept the workshop on the twelfth, is the twelfth a Friday?
Yes.
So we would have had a workshop on the twelfth anyways, regardless of whether we keep eleven, twelfth, we're not going to be able to workshop on the eleventh or twelfth. So, yeah.
We did the workshop on the eleventh.
We moved it to the eleventh.
Right, because I'm leaving out of town that afternoon. That's, yeah.
And the tenth and the eleventh, would that work?
You know, it's not, it's not convenient.
I don't know if we're going to be able to make a deci, I mean, between every, between y'all, I mean, unless obviously you guys have your stuff there, I don't know if we're going to be able to make a decision on the exact date, right? I mean, I certainly don't want to push it backwards. It's a couple of days before.
But it's, it's tough for travel, though.
Why is that tough for travel?
Well, people like to travel on Fridays, you know, if they want to spend the weekend looking at the community, you know. So, I'm, I'm assuming these people have jobs, so flying in, you know, flying in isn't a problem, but, but, they're, they're going to, they're not going to be able to fly out until the twelfth, okay? As opposed to having, which is a workday, so they're missing an extra workday, that's what I'm saying.
We've already committed to Ms. Spray that she has something on the twelfth.
But we committed to the public before Ms. Spray on the eleventh and twelfth.
She has to be here. I mean, I would, she has to be part of this process. I don't understand by moving it back one day. See, this is, this inflexibility months out of not being able to accommodate people's life situations. Life happens, and if we're, if our, if we're just going to go continually, even months out, go, well, we can't change a day by one day, you know, sixty days in advance because we've made a commitment to the public or these, it's just not reasonable to run life like that. If it was a week prior or something, I could see, but we've made a commitment to Ms. Spray that she doesn't have to be here on the twelfth, and we decided on that. What's happened here is there was just not coordination between that process and these, and these gentlemen right here. So to now punish Ms. Spray and say, well, sorry, you're just not going to be able to be here because sixty days in advance, we can't move this one day because we might, I don't know, violate some public trust that we've had because we already published this schedule. I mean, that's not a, we can't just run life like that.
I think the sentiment, I agree, I think the sentiment from the board, we've already, we already made the workshop. I think we're all, maybe not all hundred percent, but I think the majority would say that we're willing to move it forward.
Would the tenth and eleventh work?
So my, that's my question for you all.
We'll modify our commitment on the tenth. We, we can, we can change that. We can change that, so we could do it on the tenth and the eleventh.
And Mr. Cho, we can pick a different day for the workshop.
No, absolutely, yeah, the workshop, yeah, for sure.
It'll be a long week that week, guys, because we've got a board.
We have a board meeting on the ninth, correct.
But I would rather make sure that we can all be here and be.
Oh, absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Absolutely, no, I, I a hundred percent agree. I think we have to, we have to do that.
Although I do have one question, Ms. Spray. You, the, if we were to back it up one day, then what's on the twelfth would be the eleventh. And that doesn't end theoretically until three fifteen, if we had four, which, I mean, I don't know, I guess maybe look back if we had.
Right.
Three, it still ends at three fifteen. Is that, I mean, I don't know what you have planned, but that, is that going to be, like, workable? Okay.
It's, I'd just be leaving instead of at noon or one, I'll be leaving at four and five.
Okay.
Five o'clock traffic.
Good, well, yeah.
Yeah, that's the only downside, but.
That's a good point. Depending on the number of finalists you have, for some reason you only have three, then we could kind of work, if you wanted to, with each board member to come up with the best schedule, you know, back to back to back, and you're kind of done, but it kind of depends on how many finalists you have.
Okay, I'm okay backing it up one day.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't, if you all can, if you guys, if you all can accommodate backing it up, I don't think there's an issue.
Right, and that would mean then we would have our meet and greet on the tenth. So, meeting, basically, everything on the twelfth now moves to the eleventh, and things on the eleventh moves to the tenth. So.
And if they want to, I mean, this would be on their own dime, of course, but if they want to stay for the weekend, I mean, their flight back would be on us, it would be a matter of the day. But if they want to stay the weekend, then they got the whole weekend to stay and maneuver if they still want it to, Friday, Saturday, Sunday.
And, and a lot of candidates do that, they'll.
On their own, yeah.
In the, in the right location, they'll, they'll stay an extra night.
We're the right location, because we see people from everywhere.
I, I go on the record as being inflexible, because that's just my nature, but anyway.
That's okay. But you still have the rest of what you, the questions?
I, yeah, only other thing I was going to suggest, as far as the tours go, people coming in from out of town are going to want to see the community, get a feel for the real estate. There's a lot in the community to see. I would suggest we ask the Chamber of Commerce to, so that nobody feels insulted. Ask the Chamber of Commerce to come up with the three, four, whatever, and send, send, send them along. They, they can tell you what's going on, tell them what's going on in the community and, you know, so.
I'd go one step further and ask the chamber to do it.
To do what?
To be the community people, instead of.
Yeah.
Oh, is that what you said?
Preferably.
Instead of asking, having the, having them ask other commu, like, have their, have their staff be the four people, I should say, that are the, the community, the business part of it. Because they're going to know the business, what's going on. Because I've, I felt like, when you men- mentioned a community, there could be people that, wait a minute, why is this business chosen, not me? Why is this nonprofit chosen, not mine? So I think if you do, that's a great suggestion with the, the, the chamber. Get four of them or however many finalists we have, they can be the community people. As you drive around, and the school person, can, once you get to the school site, can talk about the school site.
So what I'm hearing, if I'm correct, is we'll have one staff person identified by the superintendent. Then we'll ask the chamber, and I would suggest maybe ask the chamber for five people. Because those people may have schedules to adjust as well. So then, if we, if you turn out, say, with only four finalists, but you have five chamber people, then keep your two chamber people to kind of double up with one kind.
Right.
But you.
And or backup, that way.
That's right, right. So, w- once they commit to five, then we're not calling one after you select finalists and say, we don't need you, or, so. I, I'd say five.
Okay, and I like the idea of the Performing Arts Center. However, if there's a event there, if they're having a show that night, you know, that would be, that would be difficult. So, you know, just, I think, you know, somebody needs to get on the phone and start checking out what's available on, on the tenth.
For sure.
That's it.
Mr. Tater?
What do you recommend? I, I haven't done this before, so what, what we're all talking about, and what have you seen work in the past? Do you, you think staff members, it works, you think business, community, staff, let us together, we should have a restaurant, we should use a school facility, I mean.
A combination of a staff person and a community person seems to really work well. Because your candidates get a feel for the staff, and they also get a, some input from the community. And, and again, that's, the finalists are kind of interviewing us as well. So there may be questions of the community that only the, the chamber people may have more information on. And then set, questions about, from staff about the district that staff can answer. So, having that combination of a staff person and a community person really has, has been, I think, profitable for both sides, or important and informative for both sides. As far as kind of the, the location for the meet and greet, as long as it's kind of a fairly large room, again, assuming we have four finalists, we would kind of start the evening with kind of the crowd, you know, sitting in the middle or standing. And then each finalist comes in and gives a six or eight intro of him or herself. We then get the next finalist up, we rotate them through their introductions. And then we just assign the finalists to corners of the room where the community can just mingle and go meet and ask a few questions of each finalist. FSBA will certainly be there, and we'll make sure we kind of keep the crowd rotating so, you know, a certain candidate's not inundated by a number of people for too, too long of a length of time. So the location, as long as it's kind of a, an open area. We've also had these meeting greets in what would be kind of an open area. And then the finalists would go to different rooms that were off to the side. Actually, a bigger open room is better, but if there are rooms to the side, if, if the open area is not that large, we can put the persons in rooms, so any of those options can, can work out for the meet and greet.
So, the, apparently the dinner has to be at the same location as the meet and greet, because it's only fifteen minutes.
Well, as long as we have time, let's say, if, if we decide to have the finalists have dinner here on their first day before they go to the meet and greet. If the meet and greet is, you know, ten minutes down the road, then we could have them here for like a little catered dinner upstairs. And then we'll, we will get them to the meet and greet. If the meet and greet is at a facility where it might be permissible to have them in a little room to have a catered dinner for, you know, something like for the finalists, nothing really extravagant, but, you know, a nice dinner for the finalists and their guests. So it kind of depends on the, the location and what the facility could accommodate with regard to any area to, to have a quick dinner for the finalists.
I mean, MTC seems like, I don't know, Ms. Saunders and Mr. White, is it possible to have the, what would we call it, the culinary people at MTC do a meal for us and show off their?
I, I was thinking about all the facilities named, and honestly, I think the Performing Arts Center's probably the best. And that room above where we have Kiwanis, because there is a, first of all, it can be catered by Pier twenty-two. There's parking, and the room is divided. So you could easily have the candidates in the right part where the food portion is, where guests are coming in the big main part, and there wouldn't be a conflict, you know. So when I'm thinking about all the facilities, that would be, in my opinion, the best venue, centrally located. But I'll have Ms. Cox get on that today and see if we can book that location. So we'll, we'll work on that today.
Couldn't stop these caterers?
I'm not sure what the rule, see, when you rent different venues, sometimes they have specific rules of who you're allowed to cater. But we'll certainly, we'll.
That would be cool if.
Right, we'll, we'll. We'll work on those options and let you guys know what, what we were able. But we have enough time, I believe, to get that taken care of, and it's on a Wednesday night.
Right.
Odds are, we're going to have a little bit more availability than normal.
Is dinner with us, is dinner for the finalists, or is that just among themselves, or is that with us, or who goes to that?
It's been done both ways. The board members have also had dinner with the finalists that evening. You know, the attorneys may want to kind of address what sunshine might impact that.
Yeah, I forgot. It pops its head up all the time, doesn't it?
Well, we go to other dinners.
What's that?
We go to other events. We were at one Wednesday, so.
Yeah.
You have to announce that, I mean, that's, that would be kind of your call.
Okay, I was just curious if we eat with them or not, I guess. We can get a legal opinion later sometime. How, then, that doesn't seem like a lot of time for dinner. I don't know, forty-five minutes is, especially if there's multiple courses, or I don't know, I mean, if it's burgers and fries, but that's not what it's going to be, I hope, so.
It's kind of a catering concept, and it's, you know, a fairly nice dinner, then I'll see what I can get another fifteen minutes out of the schedule. Okay?
I think if you do it the same location as the meet and greet, I think would, if we had the dinner at the Players upstairs and the meet and greet, the same spot, that saves you the fifteen minutes, so.
And with that location, the venue having that divided area.
Put the wall up, we could put the wall up to where there's a little one walk space, and the candidates could have dinner while everyone's still coming, and then open up the wall, yeah.
And, and Ms. Spray, the venue, we were at a luncheon for recognizing a community member, which is a little bit different. If you're voting on a candidate, I don't know if it's not noticed that you could have, be- because you're voting on, I'm not, not sure that you could eat dinner with them.
What, if I may, what, like the Players, the upstairs, where that could be where the dinner could be. If I may, what if, like the players, the upstairs where that could be where the dinner could be, I'm guessing. And that whole bottom floor would be a great area for the community. So you don't necessarily have to use the whole upstairs for the both things. You could use the upstairs for the dinner and the downstairs for the community. That's what I would.
E- either, absolutely.
Because it's so much bigger down there, I think. We've had events down there before, and it's nice.
Whatever.
But that facility should be, if it's open, that facility would be able to have a separation.
And it looks like they've got something on.
They have an event, um, Wednesday, May tenth at seven P. M., a one-hour USO cabaret.
There you go.
That may not even.
We'll find a different.
I I don't I don't think we need to hammer down the the destination right.
I, we'll we'll work on.
We've got ideas.
And the venue, the venue for it is the Kiwanis Theater.
There you go, so.
But we can have downstairs then.
So what, if if we're not gonna be there with the can- with the candidates because it's a sunshine issue, and it it has to be, I mean, I don't know how unless we. I don't know how it couldn't be a sunshine issue anyway, and then you'd have to take, I mean, if it was publicly known.
Dinner. I I'm not, I I think the community meatball's not the issue. It it's eating dinner.
I guess if I was saying, if we're not gonna be there with the finalists, why are the finalists having dinner together? Do they all get to need to know each other? Do they?
Surprisingly, it's 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 a good time for them to be together, uh, and we've had them. Because the mornings, they're kind of at continental breakfast. They may have lunch together, box lunch together between interviews or something, and there's really been. I think some good relationships established, whether they get the job or not. It it really is, they they like to kind of be together.
And they can talk about us.
Well, I mean, they're not they're not gonna be, I guess my thought was, they're not gonna be working together, because we're only gonna pick, if assuming we pick one of them, it's just, but okay, if that works, and again, I'm not an, I haven't been through this process before. And then eve- and then six to seven thirty, if you said each of them would get a five or six-minute presentation, did I hear you say that? So that's by the time you introduce each one of them and they give their thing, that's forty minutes or so.
About thirty thirty minutes is usually what we get.
Thirty minutes, okay, so that only gives an hour. What, I mean, I I wouldn't want it to go till midnight, but as long as it takes, you know, nine o'clock. Uh, I I don't know why we're limited, because that only gives an hour for the community to interact with these people. I don't know what others what others think about that, but. That seems like a.
I would say you need some kind of time for the facility.
Yeah.
I agree with you, it's maybe a little short.
A little short, yeah.
Potentially, then, if I could do this, if we're if we're back to the trying to get a few more minutes for the dinner for the finalists. We could add fifteen minutes to the dinner finalist and then start the community meet and greet at six fifteen until eight o'clock.
Okay.
Yeah.
Party planning by board members.
Right.
That's what I feel like. I'm like, I'm like, where's the party planner?
Right here.
And what were the other cons- other concerns that you were?
Um, I think we've kind of resolved the the tour hosts. It would be one staff member, and then we're gonna check with the Chamber for to identify five people. And if we wind up with four finalists or three finalists, then we'll just double up with the Chamber persons with this with the staff, one staff person.
That's all I have then.
Okay. Um, so I I um. I love, this is this is great. I mean, this is, I think it's all uh. Perfect. I think that, so my thoughts on. Uh, the tours is. You're gonna have to put twenty to thirty minutes of traffic time in between everything. So, um, so the, I think the really the only person that that you really gotta worry about, like, I feel like the one fifteen to four forty-five slot. It's pretty, that that's the one you, I mean, that's the one that you're gonna have most flexibility going around to the to the places. I think that you're gonna have to though. They're not gonna be able to see everything, obviously, within that one-day timeframe, so you're, we're we're gonna have to almost have it like west, east. Nor, I mean, it's 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 gonna have to be, hey, we wanna take them to MTC, and you're gonna go see Braden River, because it's right next to each other, and that's the height, right? Because of time constraints. Um, and then you're gonna go north to Palmetto. Palmetto High School and Elementary are almost right next to each other, you know what I mean? So I I I think that we just need to be strategic with those locations. Because, not because of the school or anything, because of the 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 time and the traffic.
Right, right.
Um, and 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 that's that's my biggest concern about putting everything in this day one, is I don't want them to be. Frazzled because they're sitting behind the train on three oh one, and they're not, they're not gonna have enough time here to get ready personally before sitting in front of the board and answering questions, right? So I think that's gonna, that to me, I wanna respect the the time, uh, because. I think if you push this out to five finalists, there's no way one day we get it done. I, and I just mean because of the traffic and things like that. So that brings me to my next point of. I personally think that where our building is here, I think one of the hotels you stay at is either the Marriott or Hampton right downtown. We have the event somewhere downtown. Almo- almost everything that's gonna take only five minutes to drive and get to, five minutes, or even walkable, right? Um, that's why the Pier Twenty Two on top really makes, now that we know that that what you would call it's not available, the Pier Twenty Two makes sense. The parking's a bear, um, but if we can have everything centrally located for those candidates and make it easy as possible, because again. They're coming here, they're interviewing, they need to change their lives, to change their trajectory, what's going on, and and I just don't want. The 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 just the the day to be flustered, and all of a sudden you were were caught up in in a world with a traffic, et cetera, and now we're late here to here to there. So I think it's keeping it as easy as possible. It, you may, we may be able to do something, it's kind of my idea of. I know traveling's not the best, but if we fly everybody out the day before in the morning. Is there anything we can do like that afternoon, evening? To where? Maybe it's a community tour altogether, right? Uh, maybe we get in a white van and 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 they do a community tour. That way, it limits some of the other stuff the next day. I don't want them to to do any interviews the day they're flying in and things like that, because that can be flushed, you know, traveling can be, you know, anxiety, et cetera, for people. So I don't want that, but maybe we can cut off some of the community stuff with that flight, and and I don't know, has that's ever been done? You guys have maybe had issues with that before? I don't know.
I I really think that, or or we have. When we sit down with staff and say, okay, where do you, where would the places you'd like to go, then we really do. We've even kind of worked with transportation to say, okay, you run buses on these routes every day. How long will it take to get from here to here? Uh, we kind of, it's it's pretty detailed, uh, and we always give a window of, you know, a a traffic window. So they may get back here thirty minutes early or or whatever. Uh, I I think the schedules, once we kind of work with transportation, if there's. And two, it depends on the location, uh, the the facility you're going to. There are some facilities, because of traffic patterns, you just say, look, we we're not gonna be able to go there. Uh, and we talked about community. If we pick one school to kind of go by and and take a look at, then as we drive from that school to the next school or the next area.
Talking about.
We're gonna go neighborhoods so they can see a little difference of, here's this neighborhood, here's this neighborhood, here are some of the kids we serve from these different.
And you'll drive by businesses and say, here, you know, they're a partnership with us, et cetera.
Yes, yes.
Would we consider um arranging tours, additional tours? I liked your idea about the bus, you know, put them on a bus, especially if we have an electric bus by then. Um, and on Friday, and just send them off, you know, let them go visit some, you know, I mean, it's optional.
Right, right.
But arrange it so that they could do that on Friday.
Wednesday, I I mean, I'm fine with that. I think that.
Well, no, they do the Wednesday is, you know, according to the schedule, but then Friday is just a, just a.
Okay, they're gonna.
Sure.
Just a bus tour.
I mean, they're gonna come in on Tuesday, obviously.
Yeah.
So whatever time they're here, they're gonna have that flexibility to go see the community. I mean.
But they may not have vehicles.
Yeah, that that the transportation is my, if they fly in.
If they fly in, usually, we would have to, or have, the board would have them with a rental car.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
So, and then that way, they can kind of get.
They can do that on their own on on Tuesday.
And and a lot of them do that. They do that.
Right.
I'm sure.
They they.
Right.
They'll know a lot about the community.
Okay.
Yeah.
Some folks, once they're identified, even depending on where they are, they'll come the week before, once they know they're a finalist. They're not scheduled to next week. They'll come the week before and do tours.
But my point is to give them access to the schools. I mean, like, they could go to um.
I think we.
Braden River High School and see the uh, the medical stuff. They could, you know, go to.
Be more in-depth.
They could go to SUG and see the uh animatronics and.
I think that would be.
Yeah, I think, because it's gonna be, it's just.
Yeah.
There's a lot, there's a lot to see, and I just don't know, you know, but I I'd be absolutely fine if they're coming in to give them access. I agree with you a hundred percent. Um. The the rest, you know, figuring out like, oh, I think I think if we held the dinner in the in the in the meet and greet at the same location. Would be the most ideal situation, and I think we can figure that out wherever we have it. Um, I don't think that's gonna be a a a big issue. Central Cafe, if you have it upstairs, there's food there, uh, Pier Twenty Two, of course, um. Uh, a- and you've got the parking garage downtown that you can park and walk to Pier Twenty Two. I mean, it's like there's no parking. Um. Other than that, you know, with the time, and the and I I think I think this is great. I think it looks, you know, good. I I think even. With the second day, we haven't really talked about that second day when it's one-on-one. Um. Looks like it's a, like, board member, you know, obviously candidate A's, you meet with one B, and you you all kind of, you you round robbing it around. And it, you would imagine that's gonna be taking place here.
Yes.
And they kind of round robbing that.
Yes, sir.
Here, okay.
And Mr. Chair, what I typically do is say the first board member on the column, I usually start with the board chair, the vice chair, and then the next three are the board members in order.
Sure, and we're all in different rooms.
Right, but if there's a different schedule that might fit one board member as opposed to another, if there's, we we can, we can be flexible.
It's gonna be all day.
Right, but you're right, it's.
But like, you know, let's say, let's say, just looking at this at this, the fourth board member over goes DCBA, they're done at two.
Yes, sir.
So that's Cindy, so, excuse me, that's Ms. Bray, so that she can get out of here at two o'clock, right?
Thank you.
So I'm I'm fine with, I that's okay. I I don't, you know, how you do that, I don't particularly care. I got it blocked, so my, I I just, I just say here. I mean, I guess it's fine. I just don't want. My initial thinking was like, if if we did it. I mean, here's gonna be fine, I I guess. I just, I, they're gonna be walking from this room and and then it's an off, I just don't know. Five places in here, I, you know, one's gonna be.
Fine.
I know there's gonna be rooms, but they're all different. I I was just thinking if we could potentially do it at the hotel to where, but I I don't think we can. I don't think there's hotels gonna have five different places. Um, I'm good with everything else, so it seems like we've got a, what I would say, what I would suggest for the the dinner um and the meeting space is. If you can have Ms. Cox research some spots, we've obviously named a couple, and then just communicate back with us as a whole. Would that be okay, board? Is that good just to to see? Once we nail down a place, then we can nail down how the food works, whether we wanna bring in kids. I would probably say, let's have a a cater, the lunch be catered by our our kids. You know, whether it be MTC, with whatever, have them do box lunches would be great. Um, and then the dinner probably be at whatever location the the place is. But I would like to see, we use one of the hotels downtown, we use some of those places a- a- downtown, that it's all kind of centrally to here, because that's gonna be the easiest for them to move around. From from place to place, I mean, they can even walk. Um. So. I think we're good with that. Any board, anybody else with the schedule or anything that, I think we're good? And then we'll just obviously have to see if it's four finalists or five and work from there. So thank you very much on that one.
I think, thank you for pointing out that.
Mr. Chair, what I will do is.
Yeah.
On the April twelfth, when y'all select the semifinalists, I'll come back with kind of a revised or updated interview schedule.
Perfect.
But assuming, again, it's four, I'll kind of put some details in it we'll have by then. We, you know, we have some time, and that's why we like to get started kind of early to get the input. So we'll kind of have version two uh ready for y'all on the twelfth.
Perfect.
Okay, uh, Dr. Vog is gonna talk briefly about the contract items.
He's coming up too, Ms. Saunders. We'll we'll, all communication about um. Of us asking the uh Chamber as well, will come from Ms. Cox or or whoever. We don't, as board member, we don't have to do that.
Right, right.
Okay.
We'll reach out.
Reach out to Jackie.
Jackie today, uh, I'm sure.
I'm sure they'll be more than happy to have people come and help.
They'll be very willing to.
And and, sorry to interrupt.
Oh, no.
We have.
That potentially, so so I'll say this too about the there, that potentially could be a place to have a meet and greet.
Yeah.
Maybe not the dinner, but they've got a big, they got a big boardroom meeting. You've got the other small one off to the right, maybe they could eat in that one, have the meeting in the big one.
Good.
So that could be a place, and I'm sure they'd be happy to host that as well, of course. So if you, if we can ask them possibly.
Sure.
And then you got all the parking right there in the parking garage, you just walk right to the Chamber.
Good point.
So. All you.
Thank you. Good discussion. We like to work early and to get all the logistics all in place, so we'll prepare all that, and we thank you for your input. Like to spend a few minutes and talk a little bit about the contract, uh, when we get to that point. We always like to talk about contract potential provisions. Before the candidate uh is selected, because the process normally is that the chairman and the uh school board attorney. Negotiate the contract with input from individual board members, and so what we like to do is go through different provisions that are in contracts throughout the state. So you all can become familiar with some of these and then have individual conversation with Mr. Dyer. I'll answer questions if you'd like. Uh, first step is normally to look at the existing contract that you have uh in place uh with Mrs. Saunders. And then um some of the thoughts, and we have that sheet for you, compensation options. I'm gonna go through this rather quickly. Um, normally, annual percentage increases are usually equal to what teachers or administrators get. Teachers are normally what we recommend, uh, if you have a provision in contracts for increases for for the superintendent. Um, some contracts have a tax sheltered plan where a percentage of the base salary uh goes into a tax-sheltered annuity. The the third and fourth provision there, uh, the special qualification salary is a state program that's actually in statute. It was put in for elected superintendents, but most of the contracts for appointed superintendents now include this provision. And this is a provision in which the board would pay the superintendent two thousand dollars if they go ahead to the state-approved program. And they pass a series of tests. Ironically, in Florida, the the only way you can get a qualification that says superintendent on is if you go through this program and pass these tests. So that's something that especially if if somebody who is hired, uh, that's a deputy or someone that's not a superintendent, you might wanna consider.
And you gotta pay for those tests.
That, no, the the state takes care of all the training costs except for the travel, but then if you pass all these tests. And the Superintendent Association administers a test, then you you're entitled according to two thousand dollars, so that's something to think about. It's a training program for for basically the superintendents. The second part of the training program is called a Chief Executive Officers Program, and that, you cannot even start that program until you are a. Re- received a special qualification certification, but that is a year-long program in which you work on a project that the board is where of. That really focuses on district improvement, and then it's rated by an outside group of individuals, and they rate the the project. Uh, to either thirty-five hundred dollars to seventy-five hundred dollars, depending on the quality of the product. And that would something that could be added to uh a a contract, and most of the contracts, all the elected superintendents are eligible for that. The appointed superintendents, it's in many of their contracts, and it encourages staff development, training, and getting the the superintendent involved in a worthwhile project. So those are just two programs we want you to be aware of that are available. Um, next, um, is normally there's reimbursement for expenses, communication expenses, they're pretty much self-explanatory. And civic and community activities expenses. There's usually some uh provision for for those in con- and civic and community activities expenses. There's usually some, uh, provision for, for those, uh, in contracts. On the back page, there is, uh, a provision normally for, uh, an automobile allowance or a district-provided, uh, vehicle. If, if the, uh, if there's an automobile allowance, normally there isn't travel reimbursement for in-county travel. Um, but if there is, if the, i- if the superintendent goes to a conference in Tallahassee or something, they, they would get the standard travel rate. Uh, and most of the districts now are, instead of giving cars, are using some sort of, um, travel allowance, uh, instead of cars. But that's something that the board has an option and, you know, to do. Sick leave is normally the same as, uh, twelve-month administrative personnel, and vacation leave is normally, um, it's a negotiable item. Uh, nor, the state law of, is one day for every month of employment, but many of the contracts would provide the, uh, some of the, uh, administrators are able to get additional, uh, days of vacation, uh, probably up to eighteen days or so based on the experience, and that's gonna be a negotiable part of the contract when you're talking with the superintendent on how many actual vacation days the superintendent gets. Uh, life insurance and, uh, and FRS participation, uh, again, those are, uh, usually the same, uh, as other administrative employees. Normally, uh, the board just pays the individual health insurance plan. Some negotiate for a family plan, but it's normally the individual plan, and the, uh, superintendent is usually on the senior management class of the Florida retirement system. So, that's pretty much a standard there, and that's pretty much the only difference between that and, and the rest of the administrative employees. Uh, performance pay, uh, is a, uh, sometimes a question area, and, um, should you decide that you wanna have performance pay, um, I really recommend not necessarily putting it in the contract, and that's something that you work out outside of the contract. Uh, there's been some issues about that, you know, with, with superintendents, anything the superintendent accomplishes is going to be something that the whole team or accomplishes. Um, so, you know, it's, some contracts have performance pay in it, the contracts I had, had performance pay in it, but not all of the contracts have performance pay anymore in them. And that's something you might wanna work out after you look at your strategic plan and set your goals, determine what your priorities are, and then you may wanna look at it at a later time. That's solely in the purview of the board, and I like to say with input from the superintendent too. Uh, moving expenses. I'm certain that, that the board is going to expect that whoever is selected is going to reside in Manatee County, and certainly permissible to have that in the contract, that, that, that they move into, into the county. And normally, um, the provisions are that they move into the county within six months of their domicile of employment. So, there's some moving expenses that are usually part of a contract, a one-time expense, uh, and we recommend instead of trying to negotiate with moving companies just to pay a lump sum and let the person do that contracting on their own, it's a lot less complicated, and, uh, but there will be some moving expenses depending on where the person is coming from on that. And, um, finally, um, Florida statutes limits, uh, severance pay for up to, for up to twenty weeks. Uh, and that's part of the statute, should someone be, um, let go for, um, no cause. So, this is just a summary of some of the provisions that are in contracts and superintendent contracts throughout the state, and, uh, Mr. Dye and Mr. Choate would probably be the ones that would be sitting down negotiating up, you know, like I said, with input from the board members up through that time. So, be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Want us to, uh, all of us individually to meet or to, to relate to Mr. Dye exactly-
Yeah.
How we feel about some of these, and maybe if we have others we made-
That's right, and it's, it's early on, but we like to have the board, again, a- aware of it. So, y- it's not that, oh, good, we selected the superintendent, now we're ready to negotiate, a- and, you know, know everybody's kind of in the dark.
Sure.
You know, and what are we gonna negotiate?
Um, is there any questions for the board on this particular item?
Um, I think I had mentioned once before, and I, I do think this is something the board should talk about beforehand, is, um, the termination for cause and without cause. You know, that, um, we've seen a rash of new boards terminating superintendents, um, without cause. Or, yeah, and, and it's costing the districts, you know, the twenty-week severance and all. Um, I've been giving it some thought, you know, and I, and I'm sure it would be an unusual thing, but I would, I would suggest that maybe we have the first year where we can terminate them without cause, and so that would be a non-election year, and then, uh, and then after that, we can only terminate them for cause, I don't know. But, uh, but I think we need to talk about cause and no, no cause, because that, that does come back to bite, um, boards later on, so.
You know, ironically, this came up in another meeting we were at recently, and the board attorney had a, expressed the same exact concern you had, and what he discussed, uh, and presented was actually, uh, a clause that would say that without cause could not take place within a certain time period after an election.
Oh.
So, it, and he suggested, uh, ninety days, it could be a hundred and twenty days because of that same exact issue, and I thought that was a really good idea. And his point was that, you know, the, whoever is hired, the board, the new board needs to at least work with that person for a period of time, uh, to get to know that person before they do that. So, you, you raised the issue, and ironically, somebody else was also concerned about it.
He must be my soulmate, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll certainly tell Steve who that was, but a very experienced attorney, uh, but he raised that issue too.
That's a great idea.
So, that's something to think about. And I'll tell you, I, everybody's always watching these meetings, it's applying for jobs, and when they hear that even up for discussion, that is a real, really positive thing to hear from the board members.
So, we don't need to discuss that as a board and come to a conclusion?
No.
We can just express that.
You can just express that and you can go ahead and, right, and talk that with Mr. Dye about it. So, thank you, but thank you for bringing that up. I wanted to bring it up, but I didn't wanna bring it up unless it came up, so.
Mr. Dye would like to-
Yeah.
Talk about that.
Is that called the Sarasota Clause or something?
No, well, I don't know.
The, uh-
Didn't, wasn't it the attorney down in Sarasota?
But the, it was a joke. Um, yeah, that, that clause is, that used to be kinda boilerplate, and everybody used sort of the standard one. But I think that'll be negotiated more than normal this time around. So, uh, same as the, uh, clauses about, you know, damage and destruction from acts of God. No one used to ever read those that carefully, and now everybody reads those very carefully, so, but I think that's a good point you made.
I know, oh, I'm sorry, were you finished?
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Tatum had a question.
Just for educational purposes, so I understand, all these provisions. Provision number three, special qualification salary, two thousand annually for superintendent who meets certification requirements through FADSS. Does that mean once they get that certification, they get a $2,000 annual bonus? Is that what that means?
They get it every year, yes.
They get it every year, so that just goes on top of their salary?
Because what happens is, on both of those programs, they have to recertify every year.
Okay.
So, they have to go, uh, to a certain training sessions every year, so they're recertified in the program every year.
Okay, and then the annual performance salary incentive, how does that get determined? Whether it's three thousand or four thousand or five thousand or six thousand or-
Well, that one is, it's actually rated by outside raters. Uh, people that come in, it's, you see someone from the Department of Education on it, uh, and, uh, someone from Superintendent's Association on it, and, and, uh, other outside people that will come and actually rate their projects. They have to do a written project, they have to make an oral presentation, and it takes a year to do it. There's a number of components, uh, in it that you have to go through. It's pretty detailed. I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, get you, um, some summaries of both of those programs, and I'll send those to you. This is just an introductory thing, so I'll send those.
So, once they get, so they're, they're needing to get this certificate, the CEOLDP?
They get that from the special qualification salary, right, because in Florida, it's one of the few states that there is not a, a certification requirement for superintendent. So, when people apply from out of state, they say, well, you know, what, what's the certification? Well, there isn't unless, the only way you can get it is if you pass that, go through that program.
And both of these programs, even, it sounds like they're not required by statute, but they are a possibility by statute?
A possibility, right, they're, 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 uh, right, they're, they're a possibility. They started, like I said, with elected superintendents, but, uh, many super, appointed superintendents are in the programs and they, uh, continue.
And that money comes out of our general?
Yours, yeah, right. The elected, the state pays for, the appointed has to be paid for by the, by the board. And that's all part of the salary negotiations that you had. But, like I said, they cannot get the first, the, the, the special qualification salary. They can't get that till the end of their first year because it's a full-year program, and the second program will take either two or three years to get completed. So, it's not gonna be readily available to them, because that, that, that's a real, a year-long project.
And again, how do, how do they make the determination of the, who or how or what's the process between three thousand and seventy-five hundred dollars?
That's the, the committee rates it, uh, an, an outside unbiased group, uh, rates those. So, it's not, you know-
Rate, when you say, what are they rating?
They are rating, they have a, a matrix that they go ahead and look at a, a process on the rate, they rate the project, the quality of the project, uh, and how it meets the standards of the project.
But then, once they get that certification, they get any, it says annually, they just keep getting?
They continue to get it, because they have to recertify every year. You have to update. For example, uh, their, the strategic plan is usually an important part of that. So, they have to update the strategic plan, set their individual goals, set their district goals, and they have to show what they have done to improve instruction or whatever the focus is on it.
So, one year they may get three thousand and the next year they get thirty-five hundred?
They're locked in, they're locked in at their, when their project is approved, they're locked in for that, but they have to recertify every year.
Okay. Okay, uh, can you give us an example of reasonable and necessary expenses for, for professional and official meeting seminars? I mean, I, but just maybe some examples of what that is?
Um, well, uh, usually, uh, it could be, uh, joining, uh, Kiwanis or Rotary Club, uh, pay for that. Uh, it could be, you know, join the chamber.
Like the convention trips like we make.
Right, tal- going to the, uh, trips to Tallahassee, the fads meetings, you know, training sessions and so forth, like.
Well, trips and stuff from, on a professional basis, wouldn't that just be covered under nor, I mean, if we want the superintendent or she wants, he or she wants to go somewhere, uh, okay, I understand.
Yeah.
I just would assume that we're gonna, if, if the superintendent is going to, okay, but normally that's not kinda covered under normal employee travel? I guess that's what I'm asking, or?
Well, it, it's paid out of that, but normally it, it's, you know, it's something that usually the board and the superintendent sit down, you know, whether superintendents wanna go to national conferences or, or different things like that, it's just, you know, you're kinda, uh, up for discussion.
Up for discussion, and then we would pay for Rotary membership, Kiwanis membership?
Sure.
Cell phone and computer seems pretty straightforward. Civic and community activity expenses, activities that will directly or indirectly benefit the school and/or promote good relations with public and business community. How is that different than kinda what we just talked about? Because that sounds to me like being a member of the Rotary, being a member of Kiwanis.
Very similar.
Very similar.
It's very similar. And there, there's always the question, um, I, um, you know, some contracts provide, uh, funding for the superintendent if they need to take someone to lunch or someone's in town to go ahead and do that. You know, it really just depends on what, you know, extra dollars that are paid, but, every month, but they're, but they're not really, um, it's part of, it's part of it, but you don't, you don't have to itemize and account for them. You know, superintendent's expected to go to a, an event, let's say it's a big community event, um, that, that, where it costs a hundred dollars to get involved with it. So, normally those, those are, there's usually some amount of money set aside for the superintendent to do that. It doesn't have to necessarily be itemized, not a lot of money, but-
When you say set aside, is that part of their salary or?
Yes, yeah, it could say other, it could, in the contract, it could say other salary, other expenses, and it could be maybe a $2,000 provision, and it could say to be used for-
Yeah, that, that seems reasonable.
Yeah.
And the Air Force had, I think at one time they had like commanders pay, which was for that type of stuff, you know, so. Okay, alrighty then, automobile allowance, that's just for them to, the extra miles they have to drive, uh, is it a per, is it just enough, an amount of money? Kinda like the previous thing we talked about?
Yeah, and, and-
Big gas and-
Driving your own car, gas, insurance and so forth, uh, because you, you're gonna want your superintendent out in the schools, visible, you've already talked about that, going to events, so, uh, and again, probably better with, with allowance rather than, than a comp, I say a company car or a school board car, you know, it's just, probably just-
Mr. Tatum, it may be helpful for you, uh, we can give you a copy of my existing contract, because many of those provisions are on there. So, uh, Ms. Cox, if you'll just send all board members, they may not have, at least that gives you a place to, to start. Uh, Mr. Vogel was involved in working in Mr. Dye on my contract, was it this Dye or the other Dye? But it was one of the Dyes.
Other Dyes.
Um, but it's, it's very, all these things are kinda standard, but at least you'll see what the language says and the dollars amount that mine has to give you a point of reference.
Sure, that'd be great.
And, and we always do that, and what we try to do is, uh, wh- whoever you select, you know, we're, we kind of work with them a little bit too. We, we, you know, they, so they're not, they don't come in here with a lot of unreasonable demands. Because, and that's one, by using this process, we haven't had any issues with superintendents getting contracts, you know, with the boards after they're selected. You know, by everybody up, knows upfront some of the provisions, they've seen it, and we talk it through, and good ideas come up like Mrs. Foreman's.
Thanks.
Yeah, there's no reason to reinvent the wheel. If we have a contract and it's-
That's exactly right, yeah.
We could a little bit, but it works.
That's the best way to, that's the best way to go, because it's, it's a good reason.
As far as sick leave, vacation and life insurance and all that, is that pretty much in line with the rest of the employees of the district?
Pretty much, yeah, there may be some more vacation days than, uh-
Yeah, again, mine hasn't very spelled out in there.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, it, it's-
Okay.
Many things align.
I would, just for leadership purposes, I think generally it'd be good to have that in line with the rest of the-
It is, yeah.
Employees of the district, and then, let's see, I agree with you on the performance pay incentives, I wouldn't want that in the contract. Is that what your, your recommendation was, was to not put those in?
I liked it, yeah, first of all, there's no sense in tying the board's hand on specific items right now because you're, they're, they may, there may be different priorities and, you know, and it's just, lately, there's been some issues. It was in every superintendent's contract years ago, but now, if it, it's just, it's, it's probably better not to-
It gives us flexibility and-
That's right.
See lawsuits coming up where the superintendent says, well, I met X's performance, and we say, no, you didn't, and he says, or she says, yes, I did, and it's in my contract, you have to give me the money. I think it would be better just to-
Yeah.
Be flexible on that. And then moving expenses seems pretty self-explanatory, and then severance pay.
Hopefully, we're not gonna have to-
Hopefully, we're not gonna have to do that. So, what is, has it been, has it, to, to remove somebody, has it been a three to, what's typically in a contract? Three to, three out of five, four out of five, uh, with cause, without cause, what, what are your?
Well, without cause, um, some contracts have, uh, a supermajority of the board be four out of five, but- But most of them have just been simple majority. I mean, that's the contract I worked under for sixteen years. Um, but the times are changed now. As we've talked about, times are changing, that's gonna be a big issue. But some of the things we talked about here are, you know, maybe something that, that's worthwhile putting in there.
I personally would not want to tie our hands after a year and say, well, we can only remove a superintendent for cause. I, I just wouldn't wanna tie our hands legally to do that, so. It just may be that we all don't get along after a while and it may not be anything particularly for cause, it's just, hey, we're just, the relationship is not good. I wouldn't, I would not wanna tie our hands like that. So, that's my druthers on that, so. That's all I have. Thank you.
Alright. Anybody else? Good?
Well, just a touch on what you just said there. Um, you know, there's been some dramatic changes in other districts with uh, removing superintendents. But there could be a not-so-much cause issue based on the goals that they're with strategic plan or whatever. But there may be something that is just so bad. Personality-wise with staff or with the board, that would be the problem you're talking about there. So, I agree with you, Mr. Tatum, that we should have that flexibility. Um, I was curious about the, um, the certificate, cert, certifications, both of those on the first page. Um, they go through that every year. Every superintendent in the county, in the districts, sixty-seven counties go through this, I'm guessing. So, they have to.
It's optional.
It's optional?
Optional if they wanna go into the program and take it. Now.
Okay.
Uh, uh, most, every one of them will go through it.
Okay. So, it could almost be, we could say we require that?
Well, it's nice to have a, a superintendent go through, especially if someone comes in as a, from a deputy position. Or if someone comes in from out of state that's not necessarily familiar with Florida.
Okay, so, if someone came in from out of state, we could almost make that a part of the contract that they go through that?
Yes. And, and a lot of, some boards want that because the, the training is on, on Florida school law, finance, uh, instruction, uh, and then collective bargaining.
Okay, so that could be almost depending on who.
That's right.
Who we selected. If it was a Florida resident, then obviously they probably have already gone through that. But if it's an out-of-state candidate, then we would put that in there that they should do that.
Right, or that anyone who comes in as a deputy or another position, they have not had that training.
Anything from superintendent below, under superintendent, okay, I get you there. Um, so, and, and the other thing was the uh, community involvement. Um, I, I, I don't know, I guess I'm asking Ms. Saunders, we pay a fee to the Rotary and/or to other organizations as a district? Is that limit, limited to just you or the board as well?
It depends on what the dues is. Some are individual, but some are the organization. Uh, the E D C is the organization, the Chamber is the organization.
Okay.
So, so, but Kiwanis is an individual membership. So, some differ based on the organization.
Okay, I didn't know that the Chamber was an organization, so that's good to know.
The school board probably is a member of the Chamber, they pay.
Yeah.
And the Economic Development Council and, and a number of organizations.
Superintendent's probably the contact, main contact person or something, so that, then they don't have to, to join that one.
I go in, in some cases, the, the chair, but, but others can go too. But generally, the chair sits on some of these boards as well.
Okay. Cause I wouldn't wanna pay for membership if we already have a group membership for something like that. So, I think that's about all I had. Mr. Tatum went through each one pretty, pretty good. Um, and I will start having conversations with Mr. Di on the contract and getting a copy is gonna be great, so, yeah. That's all I have, I think.
Alright. Um, if you're not, yeah.
May I respond on the, I just wanna talk about with and without cause? I do have the superintendent's contract in front of me. And it's not, the hands aren't tied, um, for, with cause. There's a provision, and you'll see it when you look at the contract, but it's willful neglect of duty, um, intentional failure of the superintendent to perform any of the duties of employment. Gross insubordination is a willful refusal of the superintendent to perform any duties as prescribed by this contract or directions of the collective board. So, there's, it, I, I like the way it's laid out, you know, that, um, the definition of, of terminating for cause. Just because I don't like your eye color, you know, and it just, it's not, um.
Oh, yeah, I do.
You know, I, I, I really am concerned about the ability to terminate without cause, so. Plus, it's expensive. If you terminate for cause, you don't have to pay severance, but.
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Um, alright, thank you very much. Is, was there anything else that you wanted to touch base on?
That's all, we're fine. Thank you all very much.
Great, thank you.
Moving forward.
Awesome, yeah, exciting.
Thank you.
Um, it's an hour and a half in, so I'm gonna take a quick five-minute recess. We'll see.
All right, welcome back from a much-needed recess, probably for me. Mr. Rinaldi, it is your turn. Construction update, Palmasola Elementary.
Good morning. We're gonna present a couple scenarios this morning on different campus sizes for the Palmasola renovation. Got the team here that assisted in putting this together. Bill Horton's here, our Director of Construction Management. Mike Penley, our Executive Director. And we have a representative from Hepner Architects who did the Castaldi report as well. So, we've been working with Miss Sellers to try to put the COPS projects together. So, this is a critical piece right now to identify both the dollar amount of the COPS and what the scope is gonna be for Palmasola in the future. Quick history, if you remember, age of the buildings, they range from sixty-two to thirty-three years. Now, these numbers are a year old because we've been talking for about a year as well. So, they've all grown a year. But, so sixty-two to thirty-three years old. And then we had one building, which is Building Eighteen, in bottom right, that was seventeen years old. The remainder of the campus was in the sixty-two to thirty-three years in age. And the recommendation was, and DOE concurred, was to demolish all the buildings sixty-two, thirty-three years of age and keep Building Number Eighteen, which was a seventeen-year-old building. And so, when we look at Building Eighteen, we're gonna be enhancing it architecturally, redoing the finishes, probably redoing the roof, redoing the HVAC to tie it into the new system that we bring on campus. So, there will be a full enhancement of that building as well. Now, we put three scenarios together, and they're different-sized campuses. Option number one is more of the traditional size, it's seven-hundred-and-seventy students. Two was five-hundred-and-ninety-six, so we were right around that six-hundred mark. And then we also looked at a smaller campus of five-hundred-and-eight students, but making the core facilities, administration, kitchen, the dining, and the multipurpose room, at least size for five-hundred-and-ninety-six students, in case there was an expansion in the future. Growth square footage-wise, they range from eleven-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy gross square feet, all the way down with the smaller campus being at seventy-six-thousand square feet. You can see that the renovation is constant with the three. That's Building Eighteen at twelve-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty square feet. Now, that campus has ten classroom buildings, three primary, three intermediate. So, it has approximately two-hundred student stations there. So, keep that in mind, we'll be building that out. And then I gave you the range of the classroom distributions, from twenty-six. Option one had twenty-six primary, eleven intermediate. Option two had twenty. And then option three had eighteen primary, seven intermediate. So, you can see, obviously, the number of classrooms reduced as you go through and reduce the size of the overall campus. Gave a little scenario here. Now, one of the things that I'm gonna caution you is if we have a seven-hundred-and-seventy-square-foot, or seven-hundred-and-seventy-student-station campus, and you were to add the four-hundred-and-sixty-eight and the two-forty-two for the primary and the intermediate, they would not add up to the seven-seventy, because we also have ESE spaces there. So, for the option, Scenario One and Scenario Two, they each had six-hundred ESE student stations in addition to the core spaces, which are the primary and the intermediate. And then Scenario Three, being a smaller campus, had thirty ESE class, or ESE students in there. And that's a formula that we work with DOE based on the campus size. They tell us what we can allocate towards those ESE classrooms. And then comparing it to where we are today, we've got seven-hundred-and-forty student stations presently on campus. And we have, I believe, thirty, let me see, we calculated it out. We have thirty-eight ESE classroom spaces on the campus presently. So, and right now, we put the projections for twenty-two, twenty-three. At the ten-day count, they're at four-hundred-and-eight students. They're projecting for next year, three-hundred-and-ninety-six, so a slight reduction as well. So, that's kind of some of the details as to the different scenarios and how the classrooms laid out. Now, getting into the actual cost scenarios. So, Scenario One will be adding approximately nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight-thousand new students, or nine-hundred-and-eighty new square feet onto the campus. We'll be renovating to twelve-thousand-three-fifty. And then additional costs include the architects' engineers' fees, they like to get paid, the building official, testing any asbestos abatement that we need to do, the furnitures, fixtures, and equipment, as well as the technology, as well as staff time to do the design and do the oversight of the construction. So, Scenario One, which is the seven-hundred-and-seventy-student-station campus, came in at right around thirty-eight million dollars, thirty-eight million dollars, give or take. And that's with a cost per square foot for the new construction around three-hundred-and-fifty dollars a square foot, which is what we're presently seeing today. We range from maybe three-hundred-and-forty dollars a square foot to maybe three-seventy-five based on the nature of the spaces that we're designing. So, Scenario Two is the midpoint, five-hundred-and-ninety-six student stations. We'll be building new construction of seventy-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-five gross square feet at about twenty-five million. Once again, the common denominator is the renovation of that Building Eighteen. Then we have the general cost, that came in at right around two, right around twenty-nine million dollars to do that work. And then Scenario Three is the smaller of the campuses, so that's at five-hundred-and-eight student stations. The new construction would be right around twenty-two million dollars, common renovation. The overall project would be around twenty-six million dollars to do the smaller campus as well. So, the common denominator that is obviously the site work, whether we do seven-seventy now or we do the five-forty, based on the enrollment levels, we'll probably maybe do smaller playgrounds. We won't have to do the initial parking right up front, we'll be able to do some additions as we go on. But those are the common elements when it comes to the site as well. So, those are the, I'll leave that one up unless anyone wants to see the map. But those are kind of the, that's kind of the meat of this presentation, on the different sizes and the discussion on which campus size you would like for us to proceed.
I've got a question. So, talk to, Scenario Two and Three, when you talk about the core matches. Obviously, Scenario Two, core matches the capacity that it would be at, which is?
The five-ninety-six.
The five-ninety-six. But if, Scenario Three, core meaning admin, library, dining?
Library, those spaces that kind of?
Would be ready for the six-hundred or five-ninety-six.
Yeah, roughly six-hundred student stations. So, you would be able to do a small four, five-classroom pod, and it would be in line with what the size of your core facility?
The addition, you mean, if it was ever that high? Because?
In the future.
Yeah, because at the five-oh-eight, on the campus size, five-oh-eight would give you eighteen rooms, using fifteen now, so that's still three extra. As they were to be growing towards five-ninety-six. And once they became, you know, that's seventy-five kids, right? I mean, ish, roughly seventy-five kids, sixty-eight, whatever, eighteen in a room. So, you had three extra classrooms for that growth to then say, okay, but everything else is still good, cafeteria is ready for that growth. And then we would be able to say, okay, now we need to add extra pod at that point to then take it to the actual five-ninety-six?
Yes.
Okay. How many, I don't know if I'm correct there, how many, how many ESE students are there currently now? I know you said it could be thirty-eight stations, but currently?
In terms of self-contained courses or so forth, not?
Thirty-eight.
Okay. Okay.
Most are mainstream.
Gotcha.
Gen population there.
Okay, that's, that's all I got.
I have a question.
You want me to pick on you first?
Always do. I, my question was about the projections for twenty-three, twenty-four. That includes the self-contained units, also include pre-K?
Yes.
Includes the total number on it?
Total number.
Okay, that was my only question.
Ms. Ray?
On the slide that you have on there right now, Scenario Three, you're saying it would be up to the three-ninety-six capacity. Your first line on Scenario Number Three matches three, five-hundred-and-ninety-six capacity.
For the core, yes.
For the core.
It'll be, if we were to design the core for the number of students there, which would be the five-oh-eight, it would be a smaller core. But we're providing a larger core, like cafeteria, dining, media center, those core components would be large enough so that you could add a four or five-classroom addition on in the future, and you wouldn't be stressing that core.
Okay. And we're gonna actually demolish all of these other buildings as we go, I'm guessing.
With the exception of Building Eighteen.
With the exception.
Four-thirty-six with possible pre-K.
Okay.
We don't have them all in.
For the projections for next year?
For projection.
Right.
It could become four-thirty-six.
It could be up to four-thirty-six if, if, yes.
Okay. And I'm guessing that when we're looking at all of the, this is a lot of money that we're looking at, and we had put this into the COPS. So, I mean, we recycle what we can recycle, correct? Like kitchen equipment?
Oil chillers.
Yeah.
We have done recent improvements. When I say recent, it could be five years ago. And that chiller is still functioning, that air handler is still functioning, yes. We recycle that and find another use for it. Or we surplus it for the future, in case another campus has an issue and we can replace it.
Trade it out, okay. I looked through this in advance, and it's well thought out. I would say that, you know, when you get to the design phase, would Building Eighteen be connected to the main, to all of it? Because they're all little buildings, they're all little separate buildings out there.
We could, when you start connecting buildings and even bringing them in close proximity, we get into fire code issues. So, we would evaluate, we would probably have to fire sprinkle that building if we bring the new buildings too close. But the overall plan is for all the new construction to be a single-building component and find a way to integrate Eighteen in that, you know, I don't know if you're gonna be able to not walk outside. You still may need to have to walk outside to access Building Eighteen. But we'll, we'll work to see, you know, if we can make those fire code improvements and we link it up with the addition, with the newer construction.
Okay, you just said that you would have to fire sprinkle Eighteen. It's already got the requirements, right?
It's, well, that was built, you're seventeen years old. Is that fire sprinkled? It is not fire sprinkled, so.
Oh, okay. So, you would have to actually?
But our new structure, based on the size of it and it being a single structure, we're gonna have to fire sprinkle that anyways.
Right, so it's gonna have to be done at some point. Okay, that was my biggest question. Could you hard-connect Building Eight to the new construction? I don't, other than that, I don't have anything else, Chair, thank you.
In your projections, are you looking at this as being a two-story building, sort of like a Miller Elementary, or having it all one story?
If we go to the, even if we go to the seven-seventy, I think we've got enough room that it can still be a single-story. If we go with the smaller ones, I would definitely say that that's the, would be the design intent to have it be a single-story.
Okay, and?
Because there's a lot of wasted space right now, because there's, when you look at that map, there are so many buildings, there are so many sidewalks, there are so many mini courtyards. I think we could make it work.
Yeah, I, just to mention, you know, I have heard comments that, you know, the courtyard is very important to them, that tree is very important. And, and they don't want another Miller Elementary, they don't want a big concrete block, box.
Gotcha.
Just throwing that out there. And I love the fact it was mid-century modern, so if we could keep that design, that would be cool. That's just a preference. No, I think Scenario Two, you know, might be the way to go. That's my preference on it. If something happens, let's say a hurricane takes out Anna Maria Elementary, you're gonna be shifting and rezoning people all over the place in this part of town. But, so it gives flexibility, you know, so it's not a true emergency right away. So, so I like Scenario Two.
Mr. Rinaldi, would you remind us and me of your experience in the whole building world? I mean, you've been doing this for like twenty years, right?
Yeah, I'm a licensed architect in the state of Florida. I graduated with an architectural degree, and I received my MBA. I actually owned my own private practice for fifteen years in central Florida, primarily focusing on educational facilities. And I've been with public school districts coming on nineteen years now, so. A mix of private and public, yes, this exact type of work.
And you're an official?
Football?
Yeah.
That counts for something, all right. So, in your experience, these type of schools that are located in, and when I say older parts of town, I don't mean that in a negative way. It's just where most of the, when I say older, it means there's not a lot of construction necessarily that's going on around there. What's, what have you seen as the course of ebb and flow of enrollment over a period of twenty years, twenty-five years, that they come and go? I'll let you answer the question.
We went through the process when I was with Seminole Schools, where we did close what was truly a neighborhood elementary school, because there was a significant drop in enrollment. Within a matter of seven or eight years, the enrollment came back. During that time, we actually had a couple county agencies in there, a few city agencies, because we knew that it was gonna be coming back to what the original capacity was. Now, what we don't see with this nature, is it doesn't go, you know, you don't see a hundred-and-twenty percent capacity. If it typically comes back, it comes back to pretty close to where you are, or even a little bit less than where you are as well, because of the birth rate reduction that DOE tells us is happening. But, so typically, you know, it does come back, maybe not quite to what the original capacity was, but it comes close. So, that's where, you know, when you get six-hundred, campus with six-hundred student station, it makes sense. We may be in the, you know, low, the mid-four hundreds now, but it could easily possibly come back to that capacity. But you're typically not gonna see it go up to the seven-seventy, eight-fifty. You typically don't see those type of communities grow to that degree.
Okay, and what happens there? I'm just curious that it, maybe couples that had kids, they get older, their kids move away, finally the couple decides to downsize, and then it's just a rotation of?
Yep.
Younger families become older families, and then the kids move away and they stay for a while, the parents do, and then they move away, and younger families cycle back in?
Yep.
And that takes a generation, twenty years, twenty-five years, something like that?
We saw it in about eight to twelve years, at least in Seminole. And it was a central Seminole county.
Okay.
That's a typical scenario.
Okay. And then how, let's say that we only did the five-oh-eight option, five-hundred-and-eight students. How long would it take to build up to six-hundred students or five-ninety-six? And we say, oh, my gosh, we need?
Right, right now, we've got a, what we call a six-pack and a four-pack that is already a prototype that the district uses. So, usually within a year's time, we can, if we have that in the budget, we can, we can easily get that constructed. And it's typically not too intrusive on the existing campus either, because we typically do it as a standalone building. We don't do it as a tie-in to the existing building.
Do you have any examples of that?
Freedom right now has a eight-pack, I think, going on right now. And Wit, we just constructed, I think it was an eight-pack out there as well, so, I mean, we've?
Willis has one, if you've toured Willis.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, we just did that a couple of years ago.
Okay, so it's not, it wouldn't take five years to add the, within a year to eighteen months, we could increase the capacity there?
Yeah.
And did I hear you say that the, what would you call it, the infrastructure facilities, things like cafeteria and?
Would be set for it, and also when we do the other infrastructure, the sewer, the water, and electric, we would typically stub out to the area where we think that addition may happen. So, that type of infrastructure is already in place.
And the cafeteria would be built to what size capacity?
So, would be built to that six-hundred, five-ninety-six, six-hundred student station.
Okay. Those are the only questions I had. Are we trying to come, we can't make a decision today?
No, no decision for today, we're just, this is all estimate, I'm sure it'll be on the next?
Well, well.
Potentially. Or, I know, we knew we need cops.
What you could do, if we had a consensus of which side we need that for our COPS, and then when, when we move forward to issue the contract, you will vote on the cost per the size then. But it would be helpful?
This is right now for the cops.
For us to get the COPS done, we need to know which number. And even though you're not voting, we can determine from the majority of the board which scenario so we can get our COPS issued.
Okay.
And then when we give you the capital, five-year capital plan, you vote on that, because we will have this in there on the timeline and the cost. And then when you issue the contract for the builder and the architect, you will be voting on that as well.
Okay, so we can, I mean, then we've heard one thought?
And you also will be approving the capital plan, which you may see before the architect and the builder as well, so.
And you'll have that like in June, that you'll vote on.
So, Ms. Foreman, we'll start with you, I mean, you kind of already?
Yeah, no, I expressed my opinion, yeah, no, I like Scenario Two.
Okay. You good? Mr. Tater?
Finance-type question, it's about three more, three million more dollars to build the extra eighty-four student stations. As a percentage of our capital budget, that three million dollars is one percent, five percent? Is that even a question that I could?
This is gonna be funded out of our COPS borrowing, so it's not going to necessarily impact your other capital monies.
Okay.
So, you can take that, you know, into consideration.
So, we authorize, what, a hundred-and-thirty million of COPS? Do we remember what the?
One, one.
One-seventy-five.
Up there, but up two. So, we were to include this and to move this closer on our capital project plan to get it done. So, whatever you determine of these, we will go back and adjust that COPS to include the price based on these scenarios.
So, we're essentially borrowing money for this, we're not?
You are correct, it's not coming out of the capital budget, right.
Then I would, I would like to go, I mean, my preference would be with option number two, and I think Ms. Foreman's thoughts about, hey, if we had a hurricane and we needed to move some students around, having an extra hundred, two-hundred seats nearby especially, because that would probably, would that be almost the closest elementary school to Anna Maria?
Stewart is, but it, they're all in very close proximity.
Yeah, so.
You couldn't put all of Anna Maria at Stewart, you would have to use multiple sites.
That's a good idea, I think it's a, you might call that a reserve, so to speak, you know, because who knows, we just missed it last time by, you know, forty or fifty miles, so, yeah. Option two would be my preference.
Ms. Messenger?
Um, you didn't, you didn't. Kudos to you.
So, to me, from a, just a business and financial sense, option three makes the most sense. And I say that because it's already with this new number of four thirty-six, it's only gonna be at eighty-six percent capacity. Not eighty-one, it'll be eighty-six. But it's only at eighty-six percent capacity. There's still a lot of room to grow there, even at the five oh eight. There is a tremendous amount of capacity at Stewart, at Seabreeze, at Anna Maria. And if something were to happen to Anna Maria, there's enough capacity at Stewart and at Seabreeze and at the five oh eight number to take care of that school if that were to happen in some act of God. So I don't think that, to me, I don't think that makes the most sense for us to do, to build a building that is gonna be at seventy-three percent capacity when we already have a large amount of capacity at all the other schools around there. And I could pull up that document that we got, but they were, Stewart was under capacity by sixty to seventy percent. Seabreeze was under capacity by that percent. There were hundreds of empty seats on that side of town. It does not make sense to me to build another school that's going to have hundreds of empty seats. I just don't think that makes good sense of the money that we do have. Yeah, okay, we're borrowing it, but we're gonna be paying interest on that. We're gonna be paying interest on empty seats. I don't think that makes sense. Even at the five oh eight, we're at eighty-six percent capacity, and that's including pre-Ks. We could put more pre-K there. We could put other things like, I'm all about pre-K. Let's put as much pre-K as we can. I'm all about that. But we have that, we have that capacity, we're still allowing it. And adding a wing takes very little effort from this board at any point in the future. It will not take a lot of tremendous amount of financial planning. They're not typically very expensive. It will not take a lot of, um, building planning because we've already had the planning. It's a very quick process if we decide we need to do that later on down the line. So to me, the one that makes the most sense is scenario three. It still allows for growth, but it accepts that there is a lot of other empty seats at the other schools over there. And we need to recognize that and not build something that is just gonna be sitting empty and we're gonna be paying interest on those empty seats. I, I don't, I think that's all I can say about that, you know? I, I certainly understand that the desire to build that, you know, the, the middle ground one scenario two feels like a middle ground. And I get that. But I actually think scenario three is a middle ground because they're still having the capacity, but we're using the money as, in the most wise way possible, knowing that we're planning for the future if we need it. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you. Ms. Gray?
Okay. The twenty-three, twenty-four projections, is that what you're seeing, three ninety-six on that slide? I think the projection is down because of the rumor of that school potentially closing. So that's kind of, well, you know, now that they know that the school's gonna be rebuilt, I think that might go up. I, I kind of lean towards scenario two because I think there's gonna be more growth out that way from following the county and what they are permitting for new builds on the west side of town. I, and it's gonna be, there's a huge movement for school choice, and Palmasola is a, I think will be a school choice. So I lean toward number two specifically for those two reasons, is the building is gonna go on and the potential for school choicing into Palmasola. I, I understand Ms. Messenger's point about having empty seats, but, you know, when it's, the cost of construction today and building on a wing tomorrow, which would that be, three, four years, five years from now, is gonna be so much greater. So in my opinion, you know, look at the cost of construction from the last two years. It's practically doubled in some cases for materials. And in some times, we couldn't even get construction materials. So I, I'm gonna lean towards scenario two based on, on that for future growth. I don't think that, I think there's room on the west side for families as the older generation moves on. I'll say gently, either to their final destination or to another destination. So that's why I think that the west side's gonna rotate into a younger, uh, population. And I think Palmasola is just ideal for that. And idea two, how many people are bussed in there? Very few. So I think that I, I would lean towards scenario two because the cost difference between scenario three and two is what, three million? And if we went back to go rebuild something, I think the cost would be more than that in five years. So that's why I'm leaning towards the scenario two.
Thank you. Uh, I have a question on the, the projections for twenty-three, twenty-four. How does that, just because I really don't know if it's a, it's a projection that we do? What, what are we looking at? Or DOE helps us with that? What do we do?
No. It, it's a trend. We do, we take a lot of factors in. We, of course, we're hand in hand with Mr. Penley with permits and so forth. So we do look at growth, we do look at birth rates, we do look at trends. We also look at, really kindergarten is a big factor when you're looking at the prior year of predictability because generally, if you're in one grade, you're migrating to that next grade level. So those are kind of easy to project. So when you look at your trends for kindergarten and birth rate, and then you look at building permits in the area, you can project if that school is going to add more when the fifth grade leaves or if it's going to decrease. Also, you take into account zoning. And remember, part of the reason why we did start seeing a trend down was that school was rezoned. We were busing students from Palmetto there. So a number of years ago, we rezoned that. It was impacting Stewart, Miller, and Palmasola. That was part of our transportation mitigation strategies as well as community backlog of kind of concerns or complaint, I would say, of buses traveling that far in distances. So when you look at all that, since that has occurred, we have had a decrease annually, and it is because the fifth grader class was larger. What's coming in right now is just a slower growth area. That zone at that school today, remember, has about two hundred and thirty-nine students. So when we're saying you have over four hundred, that is with school choice. But when you look at that west side, you have Miller, you have Stewart, you have Seabreeze, you have Palmasola, and you have Anna Maria. So those are kind of the five schools in that cluster area right there.
Thanks. I lean towards, towards scenario three. A lot of what, what Ms. Messenger said she must have stolen from my, my head. Just because, and I would say just because we're, we're, we, we'll be paying on empty seats, and we're paying on empty seats on a what-if. And, and how easy it is to add a, a four-pack, six-pack, even in the year and a half that I've been on the board, we've done several, and how easy it is, I don't think it's worth having money sitting there because at the end of the day, what, what did we hear on the, at the, um, Cheeks in the Seats, at the financial forum? The woman kept saying Cheeks in the Seats. So I, I don't see the benefit. I, I would be opposed if we didn't have the core, right? If that core wasn't matching five ninety-six, I wouldn't be for, for three. We, we gotta, we've got, because the, the bigger parts of that, we've gotta make sure we're ready for the growth that will potentially happen. We don't know when that potential is gonna be. We could have sat here five, six, seven, eight years ago with the same conversation, saying we need to, we need to build, you know, Palmasola, and it's eventually gonna happen, we're eventually gonna have a turnaround in Northwest Brayton, which we will. But I don't think it's two, three year, I, I don't think it's gonna be long enough for us to, to reap the benefit of the three. I, I don't, I don't see the justification in building a hundred stations, more, more than a hundred stations than what we need. So, and we already have open spots in those schools in that west side. So I would, I would lean towards scenario three, where, where the core is ready for that six hundred, but we're not doing the whole, the whole school at that, at that five ninety-six. Yes, ma'am?
May I ask a question? Because of the age of Palmasola, the classroom sizes are bigger than what will be allowed, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. Because they are used to that, okay? It's gonna be, it's gonna be an adjustment for them. Is there a way to like partition walls between classrooms? So that, you know, like the folding doors or whatever, so we can fake this, you know, fake out the state?
Well, what, what we've been doing with the, when we developed the educational specifications, the older classrooms are probably around nine hundred square feet. Some districts are going as small as seven hundred and fifty square feet. We kind of fall right, right in the middle, about eight hundred to eight hundred and fifty square feet. We feel is reasonable. And we've been working with purchasing with movable furniture and storage pieces and all that. So really, you may have a nine hundred square foot classroom, but you may have a lot of fixed cabinetry in there. So you're not fully utilizing that nine hundred square feet. So when we do an eight hundred with flexible furniture, it still feels like, like it's a nine, it's, it's, it feels like a larger classroom, but it's not as small as some of the districts that have gone to seven hundred square feet on those.
Yeah, I, I hear Ms. Messenger, and I don't disagree with what you said. So I'm really, I'm really fine either way. Two or three, I, you know, I'm not gonna feel. You know? We've all dealt with, you know, with growth and, you know, exceeding capacity. There's always portables. And, but, I, what, what effect is Lake Flores gonna have? When, because I, I know that that will start shifting some people around. We'll have, Seabreeze could pick up people.
It's more in the Bay Shore Elementary, Mr. Penley can talk about, but that's why we have that site adjacent to Bay Shore High available because that's where the students would go as well as inside that development.
Are you talking about building another elementary school?
If and when that ever happened, yes. That's why we have kept that parcel because that's the only parcel of land that would accommodate that. It's not really in the zone of, of.
You don't think rezoning the west side of town so that we use up some of this unused capacity is likely to happen?
I'm not in the rezoning business.
Well, talk to Ms. Foreman's point, asking about like the development there. That, I mean, that's a reality that is a question. I know some of it. It ain't price point for, well, at least when I was starting a family. It's not price point for family home like that, but it, you never know. So what is the, what is, what is the builders and developers that are there, what are they saying they expect? If at all to us, are they saying anything?
In, in Lake Flores?
In that, in that Elcon area.
I mean, you've got a variety of different housing types right there, and a lot of that is waterfront. Those, for the most part, don't seem to produce many students. It will be more the interior properties, and I think their, their price points will be similar with like Lakewood Ranch. So, you know, you, you'll have what's unfortunately today, a starter home that's probably four hundred, in the four hundreds on up. So we would anticipate that those would be student generating houses in there. And if I can, I, I'll run through real quickly what the capacities are in the schools. I'm sorry, excess capacities in the schools in, in this area. Now, this was from January the eighteenth, so it might be a little different if you look today. Bay Shore Elementary had capacity for an additional twenty-nine students. So it was almost at capacity. Stewart, which is, would accommodate a lot of the Lake Flores development. That one had capacity for an additional one hundred and seventy-four students. And then you've got, we know about Palmasola, I'm sorry, I said Stewart, I meant, I meant Seabreeze. Seabreeze has capacity for two hundred and fifty-eight. That would accommodate a lot of the, the students that would come out of Lake Flores. And I already mentioned Stewart, that was a hundred and seventy-four. But collectively, I don't think that you will be able to accommodate all the development that would occur within Lake Flores, within those schools. I, I think at some point, you're going to need to build another school. And that, as Ms. Saunders said, that's why we've retained that K-eight or elementary or middle school site over by Manti, still Manti Technical College at, at Bay Shore High School. Because you're going to have, you, you, you don't have any other sites in that area because everything's, for the most part, developed. And you have to consider Lee Middle School. And Lee Middle, if, I'm not sure I can, you know, I can get there, I think. Lee Middle, you've got capacity for fifty-six students at, wait, no, that wasn't Lee, I'm sorry, I gave you the wrong one. Two hundred and eighty-one students. So the only school I think is positioned to accommodate that growth in that area is Bay Shore High School. I think you're okay there. But you're going to have impacts on your elementary and middle schools that you have to accommodate somewhere from Lake Flores. Now, within the Palmasola zone, when I was up here last time, we had a workshop on this. I, I either told you there were four units being developed in that entire district, or twelve, I'm not sure which, but it was, it was insignificant. I mean, you, you're talking about a couple of students coming out of those, so.
And, and, and just on that same token, typically, like we go back to our ride ranch, right, from Tuesday, when a developer comes in, they know they're gonna develop something, and they know there needs to be a school, they want a school in the community to attract, et cetera. That has not happened with the development in Lake Flores, correct? I mean, the developer hasn't come in and said, hey, we're gonna, we'd like to sell you off eighteen acres, twenty acres for an elementary school.
Years ago, we contracted for a site in Lake Flores. And I say years ago, it, it's probably fifteen years because they were developing. But they didn't. So, I mean, that development has sat there for my entire career, for the most part. So we, we never acquired the property. It was not a, I don't think it was the best site available anyway. But no, they have not approached us, or we have not approached them recently.
Well, to make the consensus a little more challenging, I can go either way.
Awesome.
Thanks.
I have some more questions.
Okay, hold on, I saw Ms. Foreman, I mean, Ms. Messenger.
I just wanted to point out a few things since some stuff has been said. Not only will we be paying interest on the empty seats, we'd be paying operational costs on all those empty seats for maybe even ten years for it to raise back up to a number that would fit that six hundred number. Just gonna point that out. Those are, those are, those are general fund dollars that we could be using for a lot of other things for our students that will be paying an operational cost for seats that we do not need, and we know we do not need them because even at five oh eight, we're only at eighty-six percent capacity. Not to mention the numbers that Mr. Penley just said, which would, including Miller, which I don't think you said Miller, but the numbers that we had gotten for Miller, it was another hundred and seventy-two. So let's, I'm gonna use that number, there could, you have, could have a more updated number of that. That's six hundred seats. With those schools combined, that is six hundred seats, including Palmasola built at five oh eight. That is six hundred seats on that side of town that are available for growth, which is not happening in that area. Or choice, or anything else that we could seek happening. That's not including Anna Maria Elementary because that was a concern that somebody said. Six hundred seats that are going to be open on that side of town between these schools. Um, I, I just, just wanna put that out there, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tatum, you had a couple of questions?
Yes, so in seeing, and that, the points that Ms. Messenger is bringing up are interesting. I hadn't heard them before, I kinda gave my preference, so now I'm a little more on the fence, so I had a few more questions. I have a few more questions, so how, why is it that we have such large capacities at these schools? Is it, our predictions weren't necessarily, and again, I'm not trying to assign blame or anything, I'm just curious why have, we ended up with so much excess capacity because gentrifying of the communities, getting older?
Once upon a time, they were.
Full, full.
They were full.
They were, it, it was, uh, you know, a, a different neighborhood at the time. Remember, Palmasola has been built there for, you know, what, fifty-plus years? So, uh, they were at capacity. They were, you know, additional schools were built in that area because the need existed. But over time, uh, those communities have changed in terms of student capacity. And so, that's why the suggestion now is if you were rebuilding it, you may wanna rebuild it at a different, more current capacity and anticipate future needs at that time. But you may not, you don't need a seven hundred and fifty student station today. So, that, that's why the suggestion of making it a little bit smaller.
True. And how, how much does it, so we said it would take a year to eighteen months maybe to, to build a twelve pack or a six pack?
About a year.
About a year?
Really about a year.
It costs how much to do something?
Under five million depending on, uh, under, it depends if it's a four, or six, or eight. But, uh, you know, I mean, you'd have to look at current costs. I know we did a four pack for about two, two point three million not too long ago, so, but, um, yeah.
If you had to do that on short notice, that would come out of?
Comes out of the capital budget, sure.
Capital budget, okay.
And, and because it is a small, it's deemed a small project, we can assign, uh, already a developer that's on our short bid list, that's already been pre-approved for small projects. So, you don't have to go through that whole process of architect and, you know, builder and notice and, and presentations. Because of the cost, you're able to get those done very rapidly.
Okay. So, if we build, if we take option three and we build a five oh eight and we see that the growth is coming within a year or so, we could add extra capacity in a short.
You can, uh, but, but let me also explain how we manage growth. Remember, right now, their zone students are, say, two hundred and fifty kids that are going there and the others are choosing in. One way we do to manage growth is if a school is at capacity with their own zone, we eliminate choice or hardship into that school. So, you're also able to manage, slow it down until you have a need, uh, to get a, a wing or so forth built. So, there's multiple ways. We're not gonna let a lot of kids, uh, choice into the school if it's at capacity with their zone students. And there's plenty of choice within the region.
Okay. So, I've gotten off the fence. And I'm kinda more in favor of option three now, in, in seeing how much extra capacity we have, which, you know, being a new board member, I wasn't maybe as aware of that, but now that I know, thanks to Ms. Messenger, I, I would lean towards option three, especially since we can build capacity quickly, we're not talking about three or four years, if we see it coming, we could have it done in a year and we can take the money quickly out of a capital budget, so, option three for me.
Based on what she just said, it would cost around five million.
It, it, it depends on whether it's a four, six, or eight. But it's, it's deemed a small project, which are roughly under five million dollars, five million or less. So, depending on, do you want four classrooms, six or eight, it will vary. We did a four pack a, a couple of years ago at, at, you know, a little over two million. If you did the eight or ten, it's gonna be on that upper, you know. But, but it's deemed a small project, so they can be done very quickly.
How many per pack, how many students per pack?
Uh, depends, if it's a primary, uh, the classrooms are eighteen students per classroom. If it's the fourth and fifth grade, it's twenty-two. We tend to beef it up that way, but if you're looking at cost, we can make it a primary room and those are students that are K to third grade. So, those would be eighteen students per classroom.
Because the thing that gets me is the cost on, on your, uh, slide here from scenario two to three versus if we wait and add it on later, that, uh, cost gap is gonna be greater, meaning it's gonna cost us more later and it's gonna come out of our capital. Where if we did it now, it's gonna come out of the cops. And there's a lot of growth out of these.
I definitely see your, your concern with the future cost of construction. My, my concern is it's still on a what-if. And it, and then not only just a what-if, but a two hundred-ish, hundred and fifty, two hundred student what-if. That's a lot of homes, that's a lot of homes flipping in that area to then, to then justify that. And if we did add a hundred, a hundred and fifty, you, again, you would eliminate the choice students and the zone students, get their privy and they're there and the, the choice students would now have to choose or go back to their zone or choose somewhere else. So, again, I, I think we're playing numbers with a, a what-if, we just don't know, maybe it never grows, I don't know. My grandmother's been in her house for fifty years. So, I don't know, so I don't, you know, Mr. Die, I don't even, so it may not, it may not flip as quickly as we were thinking to where it is more. But I do understand the concern of three or five, right? It's another five million dollars, right?
Right, the, the million, yeah. And, and it's not just a dollar amount, it's the, okay, it's coming out of the, we're cops, out of the cops versus out of the capital. We don't know what, I mean, we try to project, you know, in our capital plan. But who knows what's going on out there, so scary to me, you know, from the develop, just driving out there yesterday and seeing, I was amazed at how much is going on and even the future growth out there. So, who knows? You know, I'm still leaning toward the two, but that's where I'm at and not like I'm gonna stick my feet in the mud, but.
We had, we had, you have some more questions, Ms. Messenger?
Oh, I have questions. I just wanna make sure that we understand that cops are paid by capital funds.
Right, I get that.
So, the, either way, it's gonna come out of capital, it's just whether we get it now and pay it back with some interest or not. That's really, I mean, either way, it's a capital expense, just it gets transferred out, but it's, it's still a capital expense. Um, and I do understand your point about building it a little larger now because that's a little less expensive on the capital side. But what we're maybe perhaps saving on the capital side, which we, we may never, we, it could, who knows how long, and we're gonna be paying for in operational costs over time, not knowing whether it's gonna get filled or not. And the operational costs come from the general fund, which are, are, all of our pay comes from, um, educational materials that we, our teachers use. You know, I, I mean, there's, there's a lot of expenses that come from the general fund that, that's a lot harder for us to find the money to fund certain things than the capital. So, that, that's really why I lean more towards three and I just wanna make sure that we are all on the same page about the cops too, so, thanks.
So, it, it seems like.
One more question for Mr. Renaldi. Since you've been doing this for a while, what's been your experience in these schools in older parts of town? In the sense of remodeling them, rebuilding them, has it been, oh gee, we should have made more capacity because growth happened and it would have been better to have built that extra capacity like an option two? Or has your experience been just build what you need now and because we can build it quickly later, if it happens, we can get to it? I mean, what, have you seen any of these scenarios play out?
The, the scen, as I said, the, the scenario typically is that you don't see the significant growth because of the lag time of the turnover of the homes there. So, you never, and have, have said, gee, we should have built more capacity where we're renovating an existing neighborhood campus like that because that, I mean, there, there are other issues associated. The street network around it, the way you get in, that's, that was different sixty-two years ago and we're still technically living with that as well, that, the street network and all that. So, I've never been in a situation where we just added additional capacity or felt that we should have added the capacity. We tried to right-size it for the time that we were in, which I think, you know, is, is at that six hundred, five ninety-six at this point.
Five ninety-six?
For, yeah, for the core, but, but the five hundred for the, uh, the actual structure.
Right, so.
With the ability that if something should happen, you'd be able to go up to the five ninety-six. Yeah, to the core and then bring it up.
I'm still with option three.
So, it seems like the, the consensus is option three, um, so we can go ahead and, and thank you, Mr. Renaldi, just so that Ms. Sellers knows that, um, and then obviously won't be voted on until another time. So, with that, I think you're actually still up. Never mind. I take my thank you back and, um, transportation update. Is Mr. Chapman in the audience, no?
He was, I can certainly get him.
The only reason why I asked that is as we bring, as we bring transportation up, I know you're gonna bring Mr. Warrington and stuff up. Is there something in this, in the, in the legislature right now that's talking about transportation or did I make that up in my head?
No, there was a bill that proposed that even students less than two miles would get transportation, but I don't think that's happened.
I thought there was a bill that I read.
Oh, it's been crushed.
Okay. So, there was not a bill that said we don't have to use public tran, like, I thought I was reading a bill that basically said we can, that they were going to allow districts to transport kids, but it didn't have to be on buses, et cetera.
Yes, there, there is that.
Okay, so how does that affect, so I just, will that, I'm just prefacing what?
Yeah, no, so that right now, that wouldn't affect us.
Okay. But meaning, what I mean by that, I guess, is an idea of, well, I'm jumping ahead, let's just go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause I'd like to know who that is.
Go ahead with the presentation.
We, we do and have in some cases utilized vans because that's what this is talking about. Uh, specifically for those, uh, smaller like E S E routes that may need that and so forth. But, um, that, that kinda has been available. It's allowed a different discretion on those kinda bigger vans that were prohibited. That now would be allowed, but you could have, you know, kinda used some smaller passenger if need be, but yeah.
Sorry, I'm jumping ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Good morning again, almost afternoon. We're, we're gonna give you a, a brief overview of, of the transportation. There, there's a couple of people that are also, uh, one person's gonna be presenting, Jamie Warrington, our director, is gonna present some of the details. I also wanna i- identify OJ Walker, who was our assistant director, and Pam Coleman, who just came on board with us and she is our operations specialist. Now, these people have been living, living it not just in the office, but Jamie just, I think, was an assistant on a bus and they're, I mean, they're driving, they're really, they're actively involved in the issues that we have been working through when it comes to transportation. When it comes to our challenges, o- obviously, the bus operator shortage is critical and it's not just a local issue. It, it's a nationwide issue. Right now, we're short about twenty-five drivers, uh, sixteen attendants. There's a lot of salary pressure regionally and it's not just from the school boards, it's from the Amazons and it's from waste management. And there, there's a lot of pressure, uh, from the salary standpoint that they're dragging our drivers out of the buses and putting them on their vehicles as well. Jamie will talk a little bit further about the specifics and, uh, e- exactly where the other school districts, uh, regionally stand as well. Routing assignments inefficiencies. Traditionally, we are trying to stay with our standard routes and our standard bus stop locations because our families are familiar with that. Now, we've had to begin to consolidate those routes, consolidate bus stops. But a- as we move forward and, uh, as we have worked with our consultant, we realize that there's gonna be a lot more consolidation of bus stops and we're gonna be significantly modifying our route configurations as well. So, for this year, we tried to stay with the old because it's familiar to our families. You know, sometimes it creates angst when, you know, the bus stop gets moved four or five blocks, but we're gonna, in the future, we're probably gonna have to be doing that. Obviously, traffic and congestion in Manatee County, the hotspots, I seventy-five. We've got a fair amount of construction going on and we do have regular conversations with the county about road closures and issues that we have relative to constructions. And obviously, if we've got accidents on those hotspots, then that will essentially snowball on us where if it happens during, uh, run number one, by the time we get to tier two, which is the middle's, uh, with elementaries, tier three at the middle school level, it, we're, we're significantly late and we see that happening, uh, quite often. Obviously, tourism, uh, spring break, holiday issues, beach access, Cortez Road is just very, very difficult, uh, for us. Impact of inclement weather is typically an issue we deal, deal with. But besides the two storms that we had, it, it hasn't been relatively rainy, so it's been fairly dry. So, we haven't dealt a lot this year with delays and dismissal and all that, waiting for thunderstorms to move through and all, so. But that is an issue we're always watching. E S E units, um, are in our, uh, clusters. As the E S E group kinda struggles for staffing, um, they have to consolidate some of their clusters. That gets us into some inefficient bus routing as well, but we work very closely with them and we realize, you know, that they need to, if they don't have the ability to offer a program within a certain cluster and we need to move that student to a different cluster, we work with them in order to do that. But it does create some inefficiencies as well. Rapid subdivision growth, I think we talked about that, uh, north and east county. Our routing software, at this point right now, we don't have the most flexible routing software and we're going out and evaluating it. Right now, we do a lot of what we call double backs, which is a bus will go to a school, pick up one group of students and then go back to that same school. Our routing software really doesn't accommodate that, really doesn't recognize that. And then in addition to that, the handoff between our, uh, parent portal, where's the bus, isn't, isn't actually flowing the way we like to and, and we'll talk a little bit about that as well. Student membership and scanning, uh, right now, all of the schools recognize that it's important that every child that gets on a bus has their ID badge and has the ability to scan on so that we can track, um, in case they become lost once they get off our bus. And, uh, the parent app, uh, at, at this point right now, it was an emergency, emerging technology when we brought it to the district probably about four or five years ago. However, right now, it's only tracking buses and tracking routes, it's not tracking the individual student. And there are some other products that are out there right now that we're looking at that we can track the individual student so that that parent can get some real-time data as to where their student are. Right now, sometimes they're looking for their bus or their route and the bus is sitting, yeah, at, at Matske, getting maintenance done. And so, they're, they're blind to where their child is. So, we're, we're looking at, um, some other products that are gonna be a little more flexible for us and are gonna help our customers, which are our parents and our children as well. At this point, I'm gonna turn it over to Jamie, those are our challenges. Jamie will tell you what, what they've been doing, um, over the past, uh, eighteen months to resolve.
All right, thank you and good morning, uh, as well. So, we got that one up, okay. So, these are kinda the historical trends of our staffing. Um so these are kinda the historical trends of our staffing scenario. Uh you can see prior to COVID and everything, we were pretty well uh staffed in terms of our drivers and attendance, uh which always seems to be the main focus. Um and then during COVID, it kind of went down because we didn't get a lot of people back um after uh we returned to normal operations. Uh currently, as of today, um I know this says we have ninety-five um drivers, we're actually down to ninety-three. We did lose two this week, uh one resigned and one left to go to M C A T. Um and we are down to one hundred and one bus attendants. Uh we trust drive to have an attendant on every bus with a driver to help with student management. And so we've found ourselves having to juggle them around a little bit to accommodate our uh students with disabilities who require an attendant. Most of the other uh figures uh either stay the same or go down. Um with the intention of the technicians, those are our mechanics. Um I did go and project up to the fifteen because we are hoping, we have six vacancies right now. And so we would hope that uh we would be able to get those uh filled, so that's why I put fifteen on there. Uh however, we are uh minus, uh we're currently at nine uh mechanics. I did this last time, there it goes. Okay, so some of the enhancements that we've tried to done, tried to do. So back in August of twenty-one, um in order to address some of the transportation issues the district was hap- uh was having, uh some of the student attendance boundaries were rezoned. Um and there were thirteen schools that were affected, ten elementary schools and three middle schools. At the time, back then, we were still kind of struggling, but we had more drivers uh than we do now. Not anything that, you know, we're proposing, it's always a a touchy subject when you're talking attendance boundaries. Uh but that was one of the efforts that was put into place when things really started getting difficult. Uh we also, this year, we removed choice transportation uh for most students, uh with the exception of select students in certain programs like the ACE program and the I V program at some of our high schools. Uh that ultimately, uh while I don't have the exact number of students that were affected, that ultimately freed up seven complete buses that we were able to reshuffle and try to put into areas where we didn't have drivers, where buses were having to double back to take those students out. So we did a little bit of reshift at the beginning of the year. Uh we also applied for a non-competitive grant through D O E, uh the Driver Choice Grant, uh to which we were approved. Uh we came up with a pay structure to use that as um retention and hiring bonuses. Um it has proved to be beneficial. Uh we started with thousand-dollar initial payment for all current bus drivers and then two additional four-hundred-dollar payments uh based on attendance, uh there was attendance requirements to try to get them to come to work. I am pleased with the first payment went out right before uh spring break. And we did have uh seventy-nine of our ninety-four drivers all qualify for that first initial uh four-hundred-dollar bonus. So um it's working, uh their final bonus will come uh at the end of the school year. So as long as they don't miss any more than two days of work between now and then. Uh career fairs and advertising, we're still uh actively doing the career fairs. We did one, a job fair for just transportation specific. Um I know there's other districts that do that. Um ours was was not as well attended as I had hoped, but we are looking to do another one uh that is focused based on on just transportation's needs. The other thing, advertising, uh we've now put magnetic signs, advertising signs for drivers' attendance and technicians on the backs of our white fleet vehicles. Um and then on the second license plate on the back of the school buses, there's two license plate holders. Uh we put a bus driver, uh recruiting bus driver, uh license plate on there. Uh so that as the buses are out there, we're not allowed to advertise per se on the side of a school bus, but we're using the existing license plate, which many other districts are doing. So that that has been out now for several weeks, uh and Ms. Linda Gresta, who's our liaison, has received numerous phone calls, and she is tracking where she's getting the information from. And we've had several uh interested folks say that it's because they saw it on the back of the school bus. So uh pleased to report about that. Um as Mr. Rinaldi it uh talked about, we've uh got an outside vendor uh that is helping us to uh assess our our metho- methodology of our our routing. It's been, every year, it gets manipulated and modified. They've come back, they've been wonderful to work with, uh and uh Mr. Rinaldi and I have a meeting uh with my team and the company on Tuesday to actually see those routes. They've condensed them down, they've improved ride time, uh shortened ride time, and have solutions to. If it works out, we'll have a very small driver shortage, and we should be able to hopefully get our kids to school uh on time or very shortly afterwards and not as excessive, so we're hopeful for that. You know, increased bus occupancy to maximize the capacity. Again, that comes with creative routing, we've tried to shift some things around. We have supervisors that are out on the bus ramps, they're going out, they're finding out, okay, this bus only has twenty kids, this bus has twelve, let's try to merge them together, free up that bus, we can send it somewhere else. Reduction consolidation of bus stops, uh the scenario that the our vendor is using has a scenario based on our stops and a scenario based on their stops, and there's a ten-route difference between the two. And that's what they're gonna be presenting to us on Tuesday. We went and modified the parent pickup. The the district has had a requirement for students with disabilities, kindergarten and first grade. Students have to be met at the bus stop by a parent. Um after some some uh discussions and everything, we removed the first grade requirement uh for a parent to be there. It's been generally well-received, we haven't really had any issues um with that. It has reduced some of the bus delays of having when there's not a parent there. They finish their run, then they come back to the bus stop one more time. And if the parent still isn't there, then that bus has to drive all the way back to school to return the child and then turn around and go all the way back to their next school. So that seems to have been mostly first grade parents that haven't been there to meet. So we have seen a reduction in delays based on that, just by removing the first grade requirement. So we still have the kindergarten requirement, and we still have the requirement for students with disabilities. We are currently underway and getting ready to present to the superintendent uh for some discussion, uh the two-mile. We've been looking at the two-mile walk distances around the schools, seeing which ones meet hazardous walking conditions, which ones don't, whether they've got sidewalks, whether they don't, as a method of looking and see if in the future, if we want to look at trying to free up some additional routes. Right now, there are several hundred students that we transport uh that we don't receive stu- state funding for. And through however that happened, uh that's how it's been for a long time. So we're at the point now where we might have to start talking about that, but we're trying to get some data together. I've got somebody who's been spending last couple of weeks looking at each school and every single route and the walk paths, uh taking a look at that. Uh we started a school-based bus driver pilot program um out at Maia City Elementary. We currently have two uh folks out there that just drive from Maia City Elementary. Uh one is one of our employees, a part-time employee, and the other one uh right now is a school employee. Uh we have another one that is almost done with her training, and so then we would have three folks out there. We've parked buses out there for them to be able to use, and they're gonna be, the hope is that they'll take over their own routes because we lose a lot of time, deadhead miles, getting out there and getting all the way back into town to be able to get to the next tier. So if we can kinda let Maia operate on their own, then uh we feel that we can bring our folks back into town to where we can serve our students better. So that's the hope, and we're underway, well underway with that. Um Mr. Rinaldi talked about the high congestion areas, um and then the reduction in the number of routes. We have a hundred and fifty-five allocations. When I came here in September um of twenty-one, uh they had worked it down to a hundred and twenty-nine routes. Uh we opened up this year with ninety-eight routes. So through, again, reevaluating our routing and trying to condense buses down, we were able to get it down to ninety-eight for the start of this school year. Um our vendor has anywhere from eighty-three to ninety-three routes is what they've proposed uh that they'll be presenting to us on Tuesday. All right, so some of our technology that we currently have, uh vehicle-based GPS, this gives us the ability um to view where the where the school bus is, whether it's made the bus stop, uh whether there's students there or not, drivers required to stop and open the doors, gets tagged so that we can, when a parent says the bus never came, we can always tell them, well, the bus was there at a particular time. Um it's accessible via tablet, smartphone, or P uh P C, and it tracks our bus drivers um and their performance, okay? Monitors their speed and and documents, all of that as well. Our routing software, TripSpark, um you know, it it's it's calendar-based, it's real-time monitoring. Uh our schools have an app that they can use to monitor the buses that are assigned to their school. So anytime you go out to a ramp, you'll always see administrator out there with their phone, trying to find out where their buses are. Um it helps us to do plan routes versus actual, it's cloud-based, so we don't have to store anything in-house. Um their downtime, we've had a few instances where they've been down and we haven't been able to access the system, but they're generally pretty good about getting it back up. And typically, when they go down, it's not specific to Manatee County, all of their clients are down for that time. Uh and then every night, that system talks to Focus to update and to move students where they go so that it it knows if a student's moved to a new area. We use the uh uses the student IDs, uh students scan on and off. We've used that to compare our driver reports for F T E reporting, funding. Uh and uh as well as time and attendance for our drivers and attendants, they log in and out uh based on their M D T terminals. Um it produces a ridership uh and passenger manifest and assists with navigation, it's a GPS, turn right, turn left. Um one of the things that we did add this year at the request of the drivers, especially with so many drivers covering so many runs they're not familiar with, uh they did ask if when the students scan, it used to just bring up their name, their address, what their bus stop is. Now we have it bringing up the student's picture as well, they were able to go and factor that in. Uh and so that has been a huge help, and we've had very positive feedback from the drivers on that. Uh and then, of course, the where's the bus app. And generally speaking, it's pretty good, but as Mr. Rinaldi alluded, it tracks the bus that the student is assigned to. If I have somebody who's dedicated to our communications piece, when the dispatchers tell her bus ten fifty is subbing for ten forty-five, if we don't go into the system and identify that, then mom is still tracking the bus that the student is assigned to, which is sitting at Matske or on another run going in the opposite direction. When she logs in, if we change it up in the system, in the sub-bus system, then they'll see both buses, one's gray, and that will be the indication the parent, the child is not on the regular assigned bus, they're on the other bus. Um and so we have a dedicated person that state tries to stay on top of that because that was fallen through, and that was a lot of our issues with parents. They were calling saying my kid's bus is in Maia when I live on Anna Maria. And it was just 'cause it fell through the cracks and we didn't update the system. Um so it also helps tell schools, us as well as parents, what time this bus got to the schools uh and as such. And they can get that app, download it, and track just their student, they only have access to tracking their student or students. So a- again, we're constantly uh trying to look at ways that we can up the wages to be more competitive with our uh other districts within the area. Um we're getting ready to go into bargaining, uh and we'll be addressing that currently, where it's sixteen sixty-nine is our starting pay. Um while not the lowest in the area, uh it is one of uh one of the lowest. Uh um and so we went and added a couple of uh neighboring districts there as to where they're at. Um I did confirm Sarasota was in the news, they went to twenty-five dollars an hour. It was supposed to be an experiment to see if they put more money in, would it attract more people? Um I did have a conversation on Wednesday with the acting director down there. They had uh seventy-one vacancies uh at the beginning, prior to them implementing the twenty-five dollars an hour. And they were able to fill sixty-three of those seventy-one just by bumping up to the twenty-five. So um and in my discussion with her, although it has not been publicly announced, there is talk within the board uh in that district that they will probably maintain that uh moving forward beyond this year. But originally, it was only gonna be for this year to see what would happen. So we need to get there, we know we need to do better and and uh to be competitive and to keep our folks. Uh consolidation of staff functions, won't go into this too much, but they're we're working on a reorg uh of the department to try to uh improve some efficiency, reduce some vacant uh reduce some positions uh on the operational staff uh side through various mechanisms of attrition and currently vacant runs. So uh we're trying to do that. Again, Alpha Route, uh this company uh is uh the uh owners, the creators, uh you know, they're using M I T algorithm assessment, plug in all kinds of parameters, a mile and a half walk distance to a bus stop, things that are in state statutes. And then they plug in our students and our buses and our routes and our bus stops, and then they crunch all the stuff and come up with the eighty-three to ninety-three uh route scenarios based on our F T E data that we've submitted to the state. Um again, the ongoing review of the hazardous walking, we've completed the elementary, we've completed the uh middle schools, and we're almost done with our high schools so that we'll be able to have a comprehensive report to present to the superintendent. Okay, to continue that discussion. And then finally, um we are towards the end of our enhanced school bus camera program. Uh we are retrofitting all of our school buses uh to um an upgraded camera system, digital video system, uh as the others were were old and failing. Uh we've added an additional internal camera so that we now have six cameras to observe students uh and student behavior onboard the bus. Uh we also are adding the capability to where select individuals, if we get a call that there's a fight on the bus or my child's being made to sit on the floor, uh we will now be able to live feed in and see and hear what is going on on the bus in real time, uh to be able to make sure that we're providing as much assistance to our drivers and attendants as possible while trying to keep our students safe. So uh we have that, and then um there is a three-hundred-and-sixty drone view uh piece that we've put in there to help drivers as they make turns. Um they get a little screen illuminates in their student mirror that shows the camera out the side of the bus so that they can see uh where they're going, uh when they're making the turn, and then when they're done, it shuts off when they pick up speed. Same thing when they go into reverse, never had backup cameras before, but now when they do, the little mirror up in screen will pop up and show them what's behind them. It's always been a very big blind spot for school bus drivers. So um with that, uh I'll, that's about all I've got, and I'll answer any questions I can.
Thank you. Before I open up to to board members for any questions, Mr. Dye, I just wanna make sure um and the board members know, I just I just don't want us to get into something with bargaining and as we talk about ideas or things like that, I just want us to be careful of of that. So I mean, you brought up this, you know, what Sarasota did with the solution, I don't know us discuss, no, no, you're fine. You're talking about somebody else, but I just don't know if we, that I don't know, I mean, I I feel it's kind of a slippery slope.
Yeah, I think I would stay away from the uh discussion of the compensation.
Okay.
But everything.
All right.
On your end.
What other people do is fine.
Yeah. Yeah, but everything else they've presented.
Yeah, okay. Anyone like to start with any questions?
I volunteer just for you. I just have one question. The, where's the bus app? Do you, do you have a way of knowing how many parents use it on a regular, like, on today? Do you know how many parents are using it every day?
I do not, but I would suspect that the vendor would be able to show us how many logins there were, because when the parent opens it up, they have to log in to it.
Every time?
So.
I don't like apps like that. I don't remember a password for anything.
Maybe have Face ID or something. That is something I can.
I don't want my phone to know my face. That's terrible, too. No, thank you. Okay, I was just curious if we knew how many people used it.
The parents that call to inquire, they're all using it. Most parents, most parents are using it, I think.
Yeah.
Especially those who are required to meet the bus. They're watching so that they're not standing out there in the afternoon for thirty minutes waiting on the bus.
I can understand that.
We try to send out the connect ads, telling them, hey, the bus is going to be thirty minutes late or forty-five minutes late to give them that heads up, but they will go and pull up on their app and see their child's bus.
Okay. Thank you.
Sometimes it changes. I don't mean, it means that, I mean, I don't remember if my parents wonder where the bus was, you know?
Mine didn't.
They just came over, we were there or not. This time not in trouble. Ms. Frank, any questions?
Several. A few, I guess. You're saying that our students scan their ID, and that ID, we're hoping to have that as the identifier where the student is for the parent now.
Correct.
Okay, would that be after they get off the bus, even at the school, they're going to be able to follow what room their student is in? Or would that, yeah, because that's like, okay, we're going to see that they're on the bus, but once they get to the school and they're scanning to go into school, then is that another, does that feature turn off when they get to the school?
So, so right now, they're, they're using their IDs. I'm not aware, and I don't know if they have card, you know, scanner access within the school.
There's no tracking that way.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
They use it for lunches?
Right, lunches.
And bus, but there's no tracking.
Right, because I'm like, okay, there'll have to be a turn-on thing.
It will track where they lock, where they scan on, and then the time.
When they get off, okay.
And then again in the afternoon.
Okay. Like, you have technicians. You said you have six openings now, and your future projection is to have fifteen. That would be a good plug for MTC, for mechanics, I would say.
And we have.
It's a great career in that field, it really is. I just think it's a great opportunity for people.
And, and one of the things that, that we've done is by going to Enterprise with the white fleet lease program that we're doing now, so we're bringing newer white fleet. One, one of the problems is that we want our mechanics to be concentrating on the yellow fleet, not on the white fleet. And by, you know, making that white fleet be younger than, than it is every time we bring a new vehicle on, we've got another thirty-six to forty-eight months worth of warranty on it. And so we're, we're looking closely at the amount of time spent on the white fleet versus the yellow fleet, because we want to concentrate on the yellow fleet. And that's part of the lease program we're doing with Enterprise right now, the rationale for it.
Maybe there's a bus that we can put at MTC for kids to use.
There, we, we already have.
You have that, okay.
We have given it, and we just met with the gentleman over the diesel program over there, and we are setting up an apprentice program.
Awesome.
We've got one interested student at MTC that we're working out the particulars to get them come on over and come onboard with us. So, yes, ma'am.
That would be a great, a great thing.
Absolutely.
Okay, you said the reduction of routes in twenty-twenty-two. We have one hundred and twenty-nine, you went down to ninety-eight for twenty-three. What are you, you're saying you need to probably redo the routes again? My first question would be, are we always at bus capacity, I'm guessing, when we're doing this? What is the prediction for twenty-three, twenty-four routes?
So, right now, depending on, on the scenarios, if, if we use our current bus stops, maintain our current bus stops, they're projecting ninety-three routes is what we would need to transport the current students that we are transporting now. Our numbers are low, because we know a lot of parents are transporting their students themselves, just because the bus is late and things like that. If all this works and it pans out and we can improve our on-time performance, then we would anticipate that students would start coming back to the bus, which would require us then to go and start making some modifications to allow for the additional capacity. What we have found is that we've got several buses that may be out there that only have twelve students on it or fifteen students on it. And then there's a busload of kids that have seventy students that are still at the school waiting. When we can combine them, we try to combine them, but then it messes up things like the parent app, because now, you know, if we don't go in, now they're looking at three buses and, and things like that, just the way the system sets up. We've researched several other functions and there are other vendors that will track the student, whatever bus they scan on.
Right, whatever they scan in.
That's the bus that the parents.
Okay.
So, but yes, that's, we're, so if we use our existing route, our existing bus stops, it's at eighty, ninety-three. If we use the company's proposed bus stops, it's eighty-three routes. So it's ten less routes that they're proposing. That's consolidating some of the routes, but still keeping within the actual, roughly the average of point-three miles walking distance from the student's residence to the assigned bus stop, which right now, we're close to point-two. Miles is what the average student is having to walk to their bus stop.
What would you say the main cause for on-time performance would be? For not having on-time performance, what's the main cause calling in?
The, the, the main cause is.
Is driver shortage, and perhaps emergencies come up with our drivers any time.
Absolutely. And then that just compounds it. And then this time of the year with the tourism and the increased traffic.
Right.
If we have to take kids, especially from one side of seventy-five to the other, seventy and sixty-four tend to be the choke points, and then that's where the buses just are constantly. They may already be delayed because they've doubled back to the previous school. Now they have to fight the traffic to get over to their middle school.
And we know Forty-Fourth Avenue is going to be opening soon, too, that.
Correct.
Is not far from the Massey Center, so that is going to.
Yes, we are very excited for that to open.
So am I.
Because we think that that will, will help with some of that.
Yeah, so am I. And next thing, you said that Sarasota's doing a pilot. I'm just asking, generically, did any of our drivers go down there?
We only, to our knowledge, several inquired, and several said they were, but to our knowledge, we only lost one.
One, okay. I think that's all I have. Chair, thank you.
The, the bus is out in Maiaca. How are you handling fuel and repairs on those?
So, right now, they still have to come into my, into town, into Matski for any repairs and fuel. But because they're not doing three full schools every day, twice a day, they're able to stay out there at this point about two weeks before they need to come into town for fueling. And then the buses are inspected every thirty days anyway. So about twice a month, they come over once for fuel, and then the second time for fuel and maintenance.
Are, is it being considered when the electric buses finally come, that they go out, that they'd be assigned to Maiaca? Is there going to be a charging station out there?
There will not be any charging stations out there, and at this point, we would not be sending the electric buses out there until we have experience with how far we can push them. We have no choice to tow one in if it runs out of juice. So, we've got two different model buses with different battery configurations, and we're going to evaluate which one's going to get us best mileage out of it for us, so that then we can decide how we move forward with future.
And when are they coming?
Okay, so, as of last week, two of our buses are scheduled to be here somewhere in the ballpark of August ninth. They are late. They were supposed to come in April is when it was. But FPNL is also behind schedule. They have the planning for the charging stations at Matski, but they have not started construction yet. And we cannot physically take possession of the buses until we have a trickle charge that we can put them on. So our other two electric buses are scheduled to be in at the end of August. Those are our international. So, yes, unfortunately, we were hoping to have them here this spring, but I did speak to each of the vendors and asked for an update, because I had a feeling somebody on the board would, would be asking that question.
The, the technology, the, the software, are, when are we replacing it? Have we?
So, our software, we have one more year on the contract, but we've already met, my team and I have met with one other vendor that we're very interested in. It came highly recommended from four other school districts. And we've already had a preliminary teams meeting with them. But I do have my routing team has been doing some research on some of the other vendors to see if there's anything that's of interest, and we'll be scheduling, especially in the fall, we'll be starting to schedule some more demonstrations on those systems so that we can make a determination on what we want to do for the following school year.
Typically with those routing softwares, you, you almost want to start the implementation six months in advance so that you can get all the data uploaded, can run pilots to make sure it's working so that, you know, on day one of school, all of a sudden, you don't have a brand-new system that we've got six months. So probably our goal would be in, in December sometime to make a decision and then work closely with the transition.
Great, okay. The cameras, do we have cameras at our bus stops?
No.
Is that something that we consider? Especially if we're letting first graders hop off the bus without a parent.
That would, that would be very difficult to, to manage and maintain, to have one at every single bus stop. Additionally, the Florida Administrative Code basically says our responsibility is over once they step foot off the bus, it, they become the parent's responsibility for it. Now, we do teach our drivers, and if there's anything suspicious or anything that concerns them, they are not to discharge students. They are to call in, and we'll send them assistance before we let them go. But unless it's an individual home's personal security system or if it's near a business that has cameras, generally no. Now, the bus ramps at the schools generally have cameras on them, but as of the stops, no. One of the cameras onboard the bus is above the driver and points at the door so that we can see any interactions, or if, heaven forbid, somebody should try to step onboard the bus or something like that, that's all captured. So one of those six cameras is aimed at the door. So when the student gets off, we can see that child go to their parent or, or kind of which direction they're heading.
The, the drone camera, is that recorded?
Yes, everything is recorded on the digital.
There's an accident we have.
If they say we violated the other person's lane, we'll be able to pull it up, and it'll show if we're over the line or not. And it's all recorded on that upgraded digital video.
Okay. Something else about the cameras. Oh, no, about the kids. As a parent, the thought of a, my first grader being dropped off at a bus stop is pretty, pretty scary. You say our responsibility ends when they get off the bus. Does state statute require us to have a parent there for kindergarten? That, that is our.
Oh, for kindergarten?
There, she's, she's shaking her head, yes.
No, not, not in, not in Florida Administrative Code. Many school districts have a board policy that requires kindergarten and ESE, but that's strictly a local decision. There is nothing in statute or rule that requires an parent to meet at a bus stop, even for ESE. Every school district I know of has at least at a minimum an ESE requirement.
Right.
But most school districts have a kindergarten. This was the first school district that I'm aware of that had a first grade policy in addition.
Yeah, at Seminole, we did not have first grade. We had kindergarten and ESE.
Thank you.
I want to start off my comments by saying, I know you guys are doing the best you can with the resources that you're having. You're trying, we're getting routing, we're getting MIT involved, you know? I mean, we're going right to the top here. All that being said, though, we have to fix this, and I mean, maybe that's intuitively obvious to the casual observer, as my high school calculus teacher used to say, even though it wasn't obvious to me, but just some anecdotal evidence, but at some point, the anecdotal evidence just starts to build up to a point where, for instance, I was talking to a principal the other day, and there was an ESE student, not a student who seriously ESE, just someone who has maybe level one or two. At six-twenty in the morning, this person, this parent and the student were at the bus stop, so it's dark. I assume at six-twenty in the morning, even with daylight savings time. They waited one-point-five hours for the bus. The parent, after an hour, called the principal of the school and said, where's the bus? And the principal was like, I think they called transportation and it's coming. But after one-point-five hours, the parent went home and took the child home. And so I, and didn't have a vehicle to bring the child to school, apparently. So I talked to the Maiaca Elementary super, not superintendent, educator, principal about a month and a half or so ago, and she says routinely, two, three buses arrive late, thirty minutes late or so. And maybe that's going to be a limit, you know, alleviated by the, the, the Maiaca plan that we were talking about, but I hear these constantly. And so I was looking at some of the provisions of the, of the new law, and there is some stuff in there about, this is HB one or whatever, statute, whatever we call this now, authorizing a district school board to use other vehicles to transport students. And then there's another provision about, that it says, "And when authorized under rules of the State Board of Education, and if more economical to do so, provide limited subsistence in, in lieu thereof, in lieu thereof." Are there, I guess what I'm trying to get at the beginning of my comments, are we thinking, to use a cliche, but it is the cliche, outside of the box, as in hiring private comp, private companies to transport students? I know there's one student I, I know of who lives out on Waterberry Road, and that bus probably has to drive all the way out there to drive one student, drop off one student, or, you know, allowing parents to maybe have an LLC. I don't know if they have to get a commercial driver's license or not, and these kind of ideas, because it just doesn't. And maybe if we get the salary where we want it to be, maybe that'll fix the, the problem, but are we looking at those things? Are we just kind of sticking with, well, we got buses, and we just want to do it within our little, in our world?
So at the, at the end of last year, in the last six weeks of school, the one and only contract service that we were using as a district, we were only transporting one student by contracted services. Their driver backed out, and so they dropped us. And so we had to put in place a single bus to go and pick up that one student. When we couldn't have a bus driver freed up for it, then I took my office staff, paired them up, and they would go out in one of our vans and pick up the student morning and afternoon, just to finish out the school year. There are no drivers out there. Even the contracted van services cannot find drivers to drive, because especially when they're carrying students and everything, they have to carry higher liability insurance and things like that on there. So, and that's, it's not a company to where they have a fleet of vehicles. They have subcontractors, the folks. They have subcontractors, the folks subcontract, they have to maintain, show their maintenance records and their insurance and everything. But it could be Mr. Smith in his car coming to pick up our, our students. Uh, via the company that is doing. Uh, we did meet to have a backup, uh, we met with a company called Everdriven. Um, and they say that we can, they'll be able to help us if we get into a situation where we need it. Um, however, we don't, are not currently using any kids, uh, on contracted service. Um, and it is very, very expensive to the tune of about forty thousand dollars a year per student. To put them on bus. And in my previous school district, Hillsborough, we had about fifteen students that we had on contracted services at forty thousand apiece. So, um, it's not cost effective for doing that. Um, but we will, when push comes to shove, we will use, we have four, uh, minivans. That, uh, staff use to go out to bus ramps and things. But if we have a new student to our county, it's student with disabilities or something. And we can't, we're struggling trying to find a bus route for them. Then we'll have staff go out for a couple of days and be transporting the student back in school, back and forth to school. Until we can get them on the bus, so that we can get them in the classroom. Uh, but those are few and scarce and and on a as needed basis. We've always been able to use vehicles other than school buses in certain situations. As long as there's no more than ten passengers, including the driver. Federal law has always prohibited school districts from owning, renting, or leasing fifteen passenger vans. Or anything over ten passengers. That's why typically you don't see school districts with fifteen passenger vans. If you have to go above ten people, including the driver, those students have to be in a school bus. So that's what the new law addresses, is that now we have some flexibility. We can use what's called a, um, activity bus. It's built to school bus standards, but it doesn't have the school bus insignias or anything on it, the stop signs and things like that. But it's built and crash tested to school bus standards. So now we'll be able to, we would essentially be able to use those if we needed to for activity trips. Obviously can't transport students to and from home and school in them. Because they don't have the red and amber lights and the stop signs and things like that on there. So it does open up the option and the ability, but it still doesn't alleviate the driver issue. Other than the fact that the driver of those vehicles would only need a regular Class E driver's license. They would not necessarily need a C D L license. Although some districts have a policy that if you're gonna transport students, you're gonna be held to the same standard as a school bus driver. But that's a local, that's a local decision that they would make.
To Mr. Taylor's point, just I don't wanna leave this, cuz I I agree with him about like using the, a service. Is that negotiated in the contract with ask me if we have to use, go to that resort? Or is that something that's a district we can just do?
We've done that before here, uh, we had a service, uh, back when Mr. Harris was our director. Uh, the firm was out of Hillsborough, so I don't know if it was the same one you've used. Uh, a- as he stated, i- it's not real cost effective. So it's used when you have no other resources or way to make it happen. But from a financial and logistics standpoint, um, it it's not your top consideration. And today, you don't know, a- as he stated, if the contracted service doesn't show up to make the route. We are responsible for still transporting the student and then you don't have routes created. So I do believe all those things were why we kinda went away with it. But we, we used to have a service that we contracted with.
How much is it, do we have a price per student on average to, to transport a student every year?
On a school bus?
Yeah, on a school bus.
Um, the last figure I saw, and it was done prior to my getting here, it was about thirteen hundred dollars. Is what it would cost per student, uh, between fuel and salaries and maintenance and upkeep. Uh, on the vehicle, that was what I think it had averaged out to be, I saw in Mr. Harris's files.
And the state reimbursement is?
Not enough.
About half.
About four hundred and six dollars, give or take a couple of, a couple of bucks.
You got here in two thousand and?
Twenty-one.
So maybe it's around fifteen hundred now or something.
Yeah, now I, you know, it'd be, it'd be something interesting to, I guess, to kinda figure with the higher fuel prices and and things of that.
The state recording typically is about two years behind.
Yes.
That's why we, he, he hasn't seen the numbers since his tenure.
Right.
What, what if a group of ten parents got together and created Mom and Dad's LLC transportation company? Came to us and said, we'd like to take our kids from this neighborhood and take them to the school. Would we consider something like?
Well, I, I do believe part of HB one, um, does address carpooling. Uh, and so. I've been kinda tracking it, you know, once, and wait for the governor to finally get around to signing it and everything. Um, I do believe that that is a possibility. How that would factor into, uh, the district in terms of us paying them to do that, I don't know. But we're never gonna tell a parent or a group of parents, well, you can't set up your own carpool, uh, situation. In Tampa, they had T Barta, which they just disbanded. But they had T Barta, uh, for workers to encourage them. They'd all meet in an area and the county provided a vehicle, they'd all get in and then they'd drive to the different work sites. And then somebody would take, they would take turns driving to try to initiate carpool, carpooling. T Barta did have a school module to encourage, uh, those parents of students that were not eligible for transportation. Uh, a mechanism for pu- putting out a little profile. And then the system would marry people up to try to get them to talk to one another, to combine resources. Uh, as a method of helping parents to get kids doing from school, those that are under two miles.
Do you understand what that terminology means? When authorized under rules of the state board of education, and if more economical to do so, provide limited subsistence. In lieu, in lieu thereof, does that mean providing financial compensation or something?
That's gonna be depending on what DOE, the commissioner of education, prescribes. So now that's the, that's the legislative piece that authorizes it. Now it's up to the DOE to make the determination and to give the guidance to school districts. You have this opportunity now, here's what you have to do to be able to make it happen. And we're not there yet in terms of the actual weeds of what that would look like.
And that opportunity would, would be to do something like Mom and Dad's transportation LLC and?
I would think so. That's how, that's how I kind of interpret it. But again, I've been monitoring the bigger piece, the reduction of the walking distance altogether. Which was written out of the, the language, uh, early on, that's what I was very concerned about. Um, uh, and as such, so now that it's finalized and the governor is expected to sign it, if he hasn't already signed HB one. Um, then we need to go and, you know, and research it and see how that would affect us. How we could implement potentially something like that here. But without having a structure to work under, to be able to implement something like that. My understanding is that would be dependent on DOE giving us the guidance how to do that. And that's gonna be a couple of years.
Authority, uh, the details of the rulemaking, we would have to wait until we receive that before we could.
Correct. And having worked at DOE, it will take some time. It will take some time.
I mean, my, my intuition and that, I'm not an expert in this area. But the more we can decentralize the trans- instead of having to run it all from one hub. And like if you could just get a neighborhood and say, okay, Mom and Dad's LLC, transportation LLC is responsible for that neighborhood and these three schools. That takes that off our plate. And then have another decentralized Mom and Dad's LLC too over here and and trying to decentralize this. Because I, as big as this county is trying to. You know, having been an airline pilot myself, I envision like there's this one command center and they're trying to, and there's air traffic delays. And then, which are essentially ground traffic delays here, and we're trying to manage this all and if we could decentralize it into smaller components where. And anything we can do that, like that, like Mom and Dad pops LLC, and that would be an interesting opportunity for these parents to make a little bit extra money. I don't know, it's an, it's an idea, so.
Ms. Rick's out at, the principal out at Myacca City Elementary, she really stomped the community out there when we launched this program. Uh, and we had a lot of interest, the first meeting that I went out to, interest meeting. We had almost thirteen, I think thirteen people show up to it. And they were all gung ho and I went through and told them what training was gonna be and everything. Uh, and it, it was a slow go. We lost a lot of people with that because they're like, oh, I gotta go through all that, I don't know if I wanna do it. I even went out there in the evenings and provided the training class myself, as much as we could to prevent those folks from having to come into town. Um, you know, we offered the class out there and I would send my trainers out there. Um, we're continuing to work on it. Myacca Elementary and, uh, Anna Maria Island Elementary were the two that we were really, uh, hoping to be able to launch this program at. And see how it goes, uh, because those were our two school, isolated schools. That we were having a hard time either getting to or getting back from. Just because of distance.
Like if we had a little transportation hub out on the island or, and and can we use white kinda vehicles? I mean, it authorizes us to use other vehicles here, instead of having, maybe the requirements and the maintenance for a lesser than a bus are.
Yes.
Yeah.
There, those, those are all very valid, uh, ideas, uh, and and things that I'm researching. Uh, we are requ- acquiring next week a wheelchair van, a wheelchair equipped van. Uh, that we were fortunate enough to be able to get at the last minute. Uh, we're gonna try that for maybe some of our isolated E S E students. Uh, because I have flexibility, if I can't get a bus driver to do it, I can pull somebody from the office. Uh, to be able to go and do it and put a second adult in there with them. Uh, so we're, we're trying to experiment with what we can do. But we will use the vans if needed, but I don't have staff dedicated for van services as of right now. But it is something that is on the radar as a potential for in the future, especially to maybe help with some of those. Isolated students where we're sending a bus fifteen minutes out of the way to pick up one student and coming back to get the rest of the students. You know, two minutes detour, two minutes back, four minutes, that's huge in the transportation world. When you're doing that five or six times on a route.
Oh, yeah.
Your buses come on and off the island, I, I assume. I mean, imagine if you just had its own little, you know, the idea, again, going back to my military world, unity of command, decentralized execution. If you, if you just had a, a transportation unit on the island and never had to get across those bridges. With, with small vans that, I don't know how many kids are trans- I mean, just decentralizing that, that's the idea. I mean, you guys are the experts at doing this, but that idea of decentralized execution, as we call it. Where you could just have an operation on the island or an operation in Myacca and they do their own thing. You monitor it, you know, from your central command post, but they're doing their own thing out there. It's just something to think about, de- decentralized execution, that's the, how about? I, I, maybe you guys look at, are there typical routes, like, I don't know, how many routes do we have night, how many routes overall?
We currently have, uh, nine, ninety.
Ninety-eight.
Ninety-eight.
What is it, ninety-six?
But are there, do you look at troubled routes, like Route three, seven, thirty-seven, forty-eight, fifty-two, and ninety-six are just always a problem? And?
We, we, we do and we try to, you know, the ideal situation would be we'd set an additional attendant onboard. Uh, you know, if we could, but we don't have enough of those either, uh, to be able to do that.
But those, those would be key areas to try to do these, maybe smaller, you know, decentralized, okay, these routes are, so how could we get a? Something specific that is focused on that route, like smaller, I don't know, decentralize that and take that off our plate.
Almost like a paratransit service section of the department.
What is a paratransit?
That's like, um, MCATs, they have their big buses, but then they have the little buses that run around and pick up people at their homes. And that's a paratransit service, they take people with disabilities and, uh, and things like that. So it's a separate division of MCAT. And, uh, all the major, uh, city bus, uh, organizations have a, have a paratransit division in smaller vehicles.
Yeah.
Well, that's something I am pursuing.
Yeah, something, it's already established.
We've used it in Palm Beach.
Yeah.
Um, I coordinated the program when I was in Palm Beach County and had eighty-four hundred students on public transit.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, because. They're having the shortage too, I mean, that's the problem.
Yes.
I, I, I'm not, I mean, I, the guys at MIT are obviously smart people, but I'm not real confident that all the messing around with routing. It'll just, it, I mean, it may make it a little more efficient, but then there'll be longer walks to buses and unhappy parents. And trying to get more recess- resources decentralized for local execution, I think, might be more bang for the buck than. But we'll see what the guys at MIT come up with, so.
We are trying to find some off-site lo- parking locations. Uh, Mr. Walker will be going out next week with Mr. Penley to go look at some properties that the school district already owns. It might be too small to consider putting a school on or something that we may be able to use for a satellite parking facility. To at least try to eliminate some of that deadhead distance getting out to those areas. And we know our focus has to be up north, uh, and east where all that growth is. We need a facility out there bad.
Yep.
And if, you know, if you want, like, I know police officers and stuff take their vehicles home at night, apparently I see them in my neighborhood. And so, you know, if we had a ten, I wouldn't wanna take a bus home, but that might be fun, but, you know. I wasn't gonna say, but these smaller vehicles, like I'm talking about, if you had a, apparently you have to have less, ten passengers or less. Because the federal government somehow thinks it needs to regulate local busing, but okay, whatever. Uh, but you could have the people just take their vehicles home at night. And then that, you know, that decreases transit time, they can get up fifteen or twenty minutes later and they just pull it out of the driveway and go do their thing, so. And then the double backs, can you explain to me again exactly what, is that the term, a double back?
Yes, sir. So if we have a middle school that has ten buses and at dismissal time. We may only have four buses that are there at dismissal time. Then that's six loads of students that are having to wait for a bus, one of those four buses to either double back. Or a bus from another school that might finish their drop off in the vicinity of that school. And then they go into that second middle school to pick up that other additional load. So it's either the same bus serving the same school twice. Or it's an additional bus from another school that's serving that school as a second school.
So how do we decide which kids are the bonus kids that get to go home right away and which ones get to?
So I have, I have tasked staff with, if we know we're gonna have to cover this one particular route. We are supposed to be making every effort to only make that bus those students late for one week at a time. And then it needs to be rotated out so that those students can have some normalcy for a couple of weeks. So it's not always the same students that are late, week after week after week after week. The problem is, is we can go and plan that, but then until we get into the office at four o'clock in the morning. And the drivers start calling off and calling in and we gotta start shifting things around. Then that kind of, we're just trying to get the kids to school and then in the afternoon, same thing, we're just trying to get the kids home. So oftentimes, we can't, we can't adhere to that. But that is our target, is no more than five days, should any student be consistently late. We need to be rotating it around as best as we can.
Again, it might be intuitively obvious to the casual observer, but having these children wait around sometimes what, for an hour?
Yes, sir.
School, just hanging out, you know, waiting for a bus, is, that's what I mean, this decentralized control, smaller vehicles. And I brought up one time to somebody this idea of like, and again, in the airline industry, we had reserve pilots and reserve flight attendants. And they were on call and, and what do you think about that idea of having maybe contracted people with the little? Uh, back in the day, it was a Bieber, but now we have cell phones and just, hey, somebody called in sick. Or we have a vehicle available, but we don't have a driver, you're on reserve and we pay people to.
It's something that could be considered, but at the same time, almost everybody, Disney's having a hard time hiring drivers. Uh, when it comes to school transportation, a lot of the effort, you know, we've gone through all this effort to hire these people, train them. Get them out there on the road. And then they either get, you know, finally there's a bus, a regular driver on that bus. And now, you know, the kids are unruly and the kids are disrespectful and we try to prep them in class. I don't sugarcoat anything, uh, you know, kids. I don't sugarcoat anything, uh, you know, kids are kids and we have mechanisms in place to try to deal with behavior. And, and give them training in student management and such. But we have had several people that have come in after two or three days and said, this is not what I signed up for. And they'll turn their keys in and, and resign.
What about retired bus drivers that, like, hey, I don't want to work full time anymore. Yeah, I'll, I'll sit on reserve and if I have to come in once or twice a week and drive a bus.
So I sent a team to a veteran job fair in Tampa uh last year and they were there for four hours. Uh, and didn't get one single person to come over and have any interest in driving. Now, some of the individuals out in Maiaca that expressed interest were retired, there was a retired fire chief. And, and a couple of retired folks that were really interested in it, uh, but they dropped off. And, and we haven't been able to get back in touch with them.
Well, these are not, what I'm suggesting is not a full-time position, suggesting a.
We do part-time too.
Two, two to three days a week. So what you're telling me is you're just not seeing any interest, even in people that are retired bus drivers, retired or whatever, just.
Yes, sir.
For a part-time couple day a week kind of thing.
We, we, and we have some people that are working part-time right now. We'll take anybody. If you want to do it, if you only can work mornings, you can only work afternoons, we'll, we'll take them. You know, we'll train them, we'll vet them and, and as such, we will take anybody. The applicant pool just is not there.
Do we have enough vehicles to not have to do double backs if we had enough drivers? So the reason we have to do double backs is because we don't have enough drivers?
Yes, sir. I have a hundred and sixty-five buses that are student ready and can be deployed at any given time.
Ready to go like right today? That doesn't, that doesn't include ones that have to go through maintenance every so often or?
Those are, those are ready to go, spare buses that are sitting there. Um, they get inspected every month.
So we have ninety-three drivers, a hundred and one.
Attendance.
Attendance and a hundred and sixty-five buses that could be used.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Where, where are we in negotiations? Have we started any negotiations? And when I say why not, I'm not, why not? I'm asking like that. I'm like, but I would, uh, when are we going to, because this has, I guess what I'm, I'm driving at here is this has to be fixed. This is a primary function of the school system. It, it has to be fixed and it has to be fixed. I would like to see it fixed before the next school.
Well, I think, I think they understand that a hundred percent.
Absolutely.
Negotiations are, I, what, what, what's the reason why? When do we start and when do we not start?
We tend to start it uh in May or June because we don't have the state budget set until May. So it's very difficult to go and negotiate compensation if you don't have the final budget numbers. Of what you're really dealing with to negotiate. So it'll start, uh, you know, in the summertime, Mr. Wagner and team, we've already got it lined up. But it'll be around May, June, we'll start working with both union classifications. But you really can't start before you have the final budget.
So we can get that done by the beginning of the school year then maybe?
Our goal, uh, last year was the first time in history that we were able to get it ratified. And agreed upon uh by September. So that would be the goal. It's always the goal. But um, we don't set the date. And remember, this negotiation will also include uh insurance benefits.
But why, if, if this is a must, this is, to me is like we might, what we might call a must-pay item. As in, we're going to have to pay a certain amount of compensation apparently.
Well, all, all of that will be discussed in the shade.
Yeah.
Before we um begin the process with the union, we will have a shade meeting in May. Uh, we will talk about uh thoughts of the board for insurance. And then we will talk thoughts of the board with both union perspectives as well as our budget. So we have an idea uh about all three of those uh important items. And then the negotiations begin. So that will happen in, in May. So that really is the first step after we know what the budget is, is going to be from the state.
And in my utopian, non-bureaucratic, non-government world, we would get started on this as soon as we could so that we could get the drivers hired.
May is it, may, may's the quickest you can start.
Like I said, in my utopian, non-bureaucratic govern, non-government world.
Since we're government, we can't start until the state.
Yeah, we need more money from the state.
The idea is just to have these bus dri- a, a salary schedule in place so that we could recruit the bus drivers that we need. So that when the first day of school starts on whatever it is, August, the, what is the first day of school, August? And that we have, I don't know, a hundred, or if we had a hundred and sixty-five bus drivers, wouldn't that be a beautiful thing?
We'll need that. We need a hundred.
We need a hundred. Is that what we need?
A hundred will give us a good enough uh balance to get us started to where we can cover any uncovered routes or callouts, you know.
That's, we still have double backs with the hundred?
The intention would be to have surplus standby drivers.
Yeah, okay.
That when Route ten fifty calls out, you're going to go cover Route ten fifty and they're just going to jump on the bus and go.
Okay. All right, I, obviously we just, I mean, it's, it's intuitively obvious, like I said, but we have to, we have to find some way to fix this with. Whether we decentralize things and put our own hub out on the island or get some private contractors or encourage Mom and Dad's LLC to form. Something has to change here. You guys are the experts, we're the board. But we can't just have, you know, ESE students waiting an hour and a half in the morning and then their parents go home because the bus never showed up. And buses routinely, you know, arriving two to three hour, or two, three buses arriving thirty minutes late. And what's the current, I mean, we're still in the twenties for buses arriving, some like middle schools arriving late consistently. Twenty percent, twenty-five percent, something like that. So, yeah, those are just unacceptable numbers, so. Okay. All right. Thank you for indulging me. I just needed to really get an update on all this and what's going on. Because we have to fix this, so, okay. Thank you.
Uh, I think that um, the only thing, kind of, and I agree, we, we, it's got to be fixed. And I think that um, we're going to have to look at bargaining and things like that. There's no question. So, but my, my question to you, I'm sure this has been looked at. Obviously, we talked about the I seventy-five corridor and getting through that. So, and I know you said you're going to be looking at, at potential bus spots and places to park, et cetera. And my question is, um, if that's, if that's the, the break point right there. It may be capital-wise, capital budget-wise, we have to build a facility somewhere on the other side, right? And so, um, obviously that's not like this, you know, just snap your fingers, almost we had a facility to, to have. But I do think that's something we've got to look into with the amount of schools that are, that are already out there and that will be out there. You know, and another four or whatever, so.
We're already looking at making two bus hubs. It's not on your capital plan because we're.
Well, it's probably still.
Getting the logistics.
Sure.
One will be at the new high school location. We can build the hub, which, which is out Lakewood Ranch. We can build the hub before the high school's there.
Right.
The other is in the north end of the county. Uh, they are looking at property that we have of multiple sites to see where to put it in. It won't repair the buses. It will let them park overnight and fueling station for them. So you, we will have two hubs. Uh, and that, that will be executed. It will be listed on the capital plan. And, and that will be in play within the next year.
Yeah, great.
What about the ri- what about the river? Is that, that seems to be a, is that a barrier?
That's North County, so uh, that would be in the Palmetto Parish area out there. So one would be in that area and one would be uh east of seventy-five.
And then the hubs are great and all that's great, but if you have buses sitting empty because you don't got a driver, it is what it is. And then, and until we, either one, it's, it's something like Sarasota did. Or two, we allow, uh, saying we, somehow DOE, somebody allows non. You know, CDL drivers, et cetera, twenty-five passenger buses, whatever. Until that's there, uh, it's going to be a struggle. And we obviously can't renegotiate in the middle of the year. We negotiated last year, you know, but, but. Mr. James, I'm sorry, it's got to be fixed and we got to figure out something. Um, and so, uh, I mean, I know there's, there's, y'all are thinking about everything and doing everything you can. It's just going to come back to us when we get to negotiations and we got to, we got to fix it. And so, um, you know, it's going to be important for this year.
So maybe this should be one of our legislative priorities for next year is more funding for transportation. It seems we have the capability with the assets that we have to transport students. We just don't have the funding for operations. So I would put that little seed into our future legislative ask. Um, I would even go as far as saying and start lobbying for that. Uh, and I would say that for every district. I mean, every district has the same problem. And if all of us kind of, you know, the custarium group collectively make that a legislative ask. I think that would have more weight to it and it's going to meet so many needs, you know, the, and building a hub, you know. I don't know. I think that's a great idea for having a hub out east and even out on the west side.
We don't have space right now on the west side, but Matske's not that far for that group.
Right.
We can pull the, the east and the north, uh, I think we can manage our time perspective.
Yeah, because we have, like, again, we have the buses that you can cycle out. Okay, this bus has to come in for its thirty-day PMs and then give another bus out. So doing the actual maintenance at the Matsy, it would be senseless to build another mechanics, basically, facility. But having a little hub with gas is, is enough, I would think. I think that's a great way, great idea to do that. And, but I would say, when we were in Tallahassee, that was the one thing that was expressed to us. Make your priority list now for next year. And I think asking for, you know, money for transportation would be one of those. And when you talked about the white fleet being able to transport students to activities. Maybe that same bus or eighteen, whatever could transport kids to and from sports within a county. I know that that, that's been a thing there too. You know, I don't know, ball team, football team, not all their equipment, but at least the students. So, I don't know. I used to drive a bus for sports because I was a coach. So it was great. The parents couldn't ride the bus, but the students could. So it was fun. It was a lot of fun and it was a lot of coaching and, 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 you know, the athletes. Comma camaraderie, so it was fun. So maybe that's something we can look at in the future with this new, new thing, so. Yeah, that's what, that's my, and start asking for money from the state, everybody out there. Start asking for transportation money.
Um, thank you very much for your presentation.
Great. That was a great job. Thank you. Very thorough.
We'll continue to work on it. I think it's negotiations, we're going to have to jump into it and figure it out. So, that is it for the agenda item. We are good to go. I want to wish everybody a good Friday afternoon, good weekend. See ya.
Thanks, Seth.